To our regular city council meeting on Monday, May 23, 2022. Pursuant to government code section 54953E, members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live streams on Daily City's YouTube channel and you can check it out on or the city's agenda website at www.dailycity.org/Agendas or on local channel 27. Okay. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under God as above liberty and justice for all.
All right. Smart this. Okay, so we have a few presentations today. First presentation is the fiscal year 2023 Operating Capital Improvement Budget, and I'll hand it over to the staff.
Mr. Mayor, I think we would need a roll call.
You are completely correct. I'm jumping the gun here. Roll call. Sorry about that, Ms. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. Now we can go on to presentations for item number one, Fiscal Year 2023 Operating and Capital Improvement Budget Preview.
Good evening, Dr. Mayor. I noticed you had two other presentations as well on the agenda. If you'd like to take those first, I'm more than willing to go last on the presentations.
Great. Thank you for that recommendation. Let's go ahead and do that. So we'll start off with item number two first. So proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month, and we have a proclamation. Whereas Older Americans Month was established in 1963 and is celebrated annually every May across the country through ceremonies, events, fairs, and other such activities, and is a time to acknowledge the contributions of past and current older persons to our country. And whereas the theme of Older Americans Month 2022 is Age My Way, which focuses on opportunities for all of us to explore the many ways older adults can remain in and be involved with their communities. And whereas Daily City includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties, and whereas Daily City benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience, and whereas Daily City recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty, and whereas Daily City can foster communities of strength by creating opportunity to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magual, Mayor and the members of the City Council of Daily City, hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Older Americans Month and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community. And those accepting the proclamation is Tita Perla Ibariantos and Phyllis Rizzi, Age Friendly Task Force. If I would like to hand it over to the floor of my colleagues first before we hand it over to our recipients. So Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura. Vice Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dos Magual. So as I see these two wonderful recipients who are getting recognition today, I can't help but think that, well, they're really, I mean, I guess old is the word for this, but those two individuals are really not old in the sense that they are truly remarkable people who have not let their age affect how much they are involved in the community. And particularly with Tita Perla, I mean, she just, she reminds me of like the ever-ready battery. She just keeps on going and going, and she's basically built PBRC into what it is, and she's just relentless in her energy and her time. And I don't really know if anyone in her age group that can really do something like that. She's just a remarkable, remarkable person. So kudos to both recipients. I want to thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging them. I think they're both outstanding individuals. And Phyllis, with all her work she does in the Bay Shore, and how she cares so much about the community, and she's always a constant voice out there. I admire her as well. So thank you to both of them, and congratulations on being recognized as the recipients for this today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge both the recipients this evening. I've been in contact with them throughout the years while being on city council, and it's unfortunate that I had to be on city council to come across these outstanding women. Phyllis and Tita Perla, your contribution to the Age Friendly City Initiative has basically put Daily City on the map in basically awareness and especially bringing the awareness about our seniors and what they do for our community. Tita Perla, you know, at events, while I sit in the chair, you're always walking and running around and just, you know, I'm just amazed as to how much you do. And, you know, this is definitely well deserved. So whoever created the theme Age My Way, I think it sets in an example for others to follow. And I would definitely try to follow the examples that you both have brought and to age my way, and I think it makes for a greater life and being appreciative of everything that we have. Thank you so much. Well deserved.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, here we go. Look at these ladies. The reason they have Age My Way, I think, is Tita Perla and Ms. Phyllis, is that they shine inside and out. They're beautiful, or I think the light on the inside, every time you see both of these, and Tita Perla, I have to agree, you never sit down. So this is the first time I actually have seen you sitting down in a while because you're always going, 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 and doing, doing, doing for everybody, and always with a big heart, love. The spirit that you do it with is truly pure and loving. You come from a both, come from a loving place. When you get back to this community, it touches everyone's heart of all ages. But in particular, you guys are shining in examples of what seniors can do, what they can be, and that you advocate for them and let people know that we're all going to be there if we're not already there, but, and that you are going to be there for us and being a shining example, a true inspiration, both of you, that gives us the more inspiration that we have for our community that spreads the love and the kindness and the blessings that you bring through your family, you bring through your communities, and you bring it to transcend to us. So we are truly blessed in this community that these two stars are here, and we want you to stay here for another 150, 200, 300 years. And God bless you, to both of you, and look forward to what you're doing, and thanks for putting us on the map as the age-friendly, and they do so much more in the cultural events. I mean, there's a whole list that we could get about both of you. And privately, they do things, I think, most people that know them, they do things and they do it without recognition. I know they bring people little, little things they bake. Yes, Tita Perla. And they put them in a little napkin with a little basket, and so kind and generous and letting people know that they care about them. So we are great beneficiaries of both of you being here with our hearts, and we should embrace more of what both of you give to us. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to both of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to share with everyone, I'm having some technical difficulties with my camera, but nonetheless, I am so thrilled to see Tita Perla Ibariantos and Ms. Phyllis Rizzi here, accepting this proclamation. Thank you both so much for your continued service to our community, your energy, passion, and tenacity. Tita Perla, you've been such an inspiration. You have a heart filled with so much compassion, and there is no doubt why you were born on Valentine's. Your natural ability to leave and serve and give to others is tremendous. Ms. Rizzi, you are always also upbeat and never, you're always there at DCPLA events. I would say perfect attendance, always greeting everyone. And so for both of you, not only on the older adults platform, you also give in so many ways. You know, one of my first jobs was working as a community service worker, supporting older adults. And I will say to this day, it was one of the most fulfilling jobs, being able to serve our elders and learn from their wisdom and lessons. So I learned from you, Tita Perla and Ms. Rizzi. Thank you for being older adult icons in Daily City. We are so blessed to have. Thank you.
Thank you for those beautiful words. Councilmember Justin Manalo, I want to echo the same sentiments with my colleagues. Tita Perla and Ms. Phyllis Rizzi, thank you for being the oracles of our communities and leaders in our communities, and you provide so much wisdom, experience. And there's always a quote that I quote from one of my favorite artists, Bob Marley. And Bob Marley said, "In this bright future, you can't forget your past." And so in terms of understanding where we're going, you are the ones that hold on to that sacred knowledge and sacred wisdom that can be passed down so we can help us guide where Daily City will go to. And so with that, I'd like to offer you all the floor. I don't know who wants to go first, but I want to give you all the space to share your thoughts and, yes, Tita Perla.
Okay. Mayor Rod McWall, Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura, members of the Daily City City Council, Mr. Glenn Sylvester, Justin Manalo, Pam Di Giovanni, and of course, our City Manager, Chiana Magby. Good evening. Wow, this is a surprise. So you better hurry up, go order, and follow my aides, right? So that in order to be in this position, I'm so honored tonight. As one of the members of the task force on age-friendly community, I'm so proud seeing the strong commitment of Daily City to the needs of serving the needs of the community, especially the seniors. I have seen during the pandemic how the city is very much involved in the emergency food distribution. It was very much appreciated. Of course, all the city officials with your support, we can do more. I would love to continue to be in the task force because I would love looking forward to implementation of our proposed projects that will ease the lives of our seniors. We can do more to your help, as what I have said. I would like that our seniors will count on the city, and not only the seniors, but the community are looking with us. And that is the plus. So thank you very much for all the wonderful things you have done, not only for the seniors, but all the community at large. To all of you, thank you for this wonderful gesture, and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tita Perla. Ms. Phyllis Rizzi, you have the floor. Ms. Rizzi, I don't know, you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you for some reason. I don't understand.
Maybe she can type in into the chat what?
Is there a chat option? I'm not sure.
There's no chat option, Mayor.
Okay.
Can we have her call or call her?
Yeah. Is there a way we could have you call in, Phyllis? I don't, there's a...
Mayor, maybe she could call someone?
She called?
Yeah.
Maybe somebody can call.
Phyllis, I'm sending you an email. If you want to call me with the number I listed, I can put you on speakerphone.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, everyone, I have Phyllis on the line. Phyllis, if you could say something, we'll see if we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for your indulgence.
Okay. Hold on a second. Hold on a second, Phyllis. Let me see if I can fix this.
You're muted, Stephen.
I know. We're troubleshooting. One second.
All right.
We're back. Go ahead, Phyllis.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, they can hear you.
Okay. I am so very, very sorry for the interruption. I know you have a lot of business to get to, and I truly appreciate it in the fact that you're honoring us so much. And I'd say that honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, it is an honor to accept this award, and it celebrates Older American Month every year, and it's just a wonderful thing to have you recognize it. Our city has had an exceptional number of city staff and volunteers who are dedicated to making our city a safe and happy place for the older community, and I'm proud to volunteer with the Daily City Age Friendly Task Force. I appreciate the opportunities that Daily City has given us to continue helping our city grow by endorsing the programs that benefit the senior communities. And I am just so, so proud to be part of it. I thank you very much, and I'm very sorry. And thank you for your indulgence. I'm going to sign on and listen to the rest of the council meeting now. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. People are...
Thank you, Phyllis, for your words. And yes, thank you, Stephen, for making this communication happen. I appreciate going the extra mile. Next on agenda is item number three, Proclaiming May 2022 as Jewish American Heritage Month, and I'll hand it over to my fellow colleague, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, with the honors to do the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, if somebody could pull up the proclamation, that'd be great. I want to thank the mayor because this is the very first time this has been done in our city, and he did not, I want to recognize the fact that he did not even hesitate because it's the mayor that approves the agenda so that people know in the audience, and I want to know that he wholeheartedly supported and allow me to give this proclamation. And tonight, we have Myra and Al Herpes, longtime residents. We have Rachel Goodman, who serves on our bicycle pedestrian advisory, lives in our community. We have David Zetscher, longtime employee. So if you'll allow me to read a part of this because it is the very first time, Mayor, that it has been done in our city and that it is really valuable, especially during this time of antisemitism, just like AAPI hate, allow me. May has recognized as Jewish American Heritage Month to honor Jewish Americans, past and present, who have in extensively woven the experience and their accomplishments into the fabric of our national identity. And the Jewish American experience is a story of faith, fortitude, and progress, and is a quintessential American experience that is connected to key tenets of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience. And from our nation's earliest days, Jewish Americans have been an essential part of the American story, greatly contributing to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all people, even while in the face of discrimination and adversity, working tirelessly to realize their piece of the American dream with relentless spirit. And Jewish Americans have worked relentlessly to strengthen the promise of religious freedom and civil rights in the United States of America by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, teach empathy and compassion, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And the vibrant culture and life of the Jewish people have experienced prejudice and discrimination, and that Jewish communities continue to confront hostility and bigotry, including in America. And the city of Daily City shares the obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism and hatred wherever it exists. And during Jewish American Heritage Month, the city of Daily City celebrates the hard-fought progress won through the struggle and sacrifice of Jewish Americans, and we rededicate ourselves to building a world where diversity is cherished and faith is protected. Our mayor graciously, on behalf of therefore Dr. Roderick Dos Magual, our gracious mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Daily City, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Jewish American Heritage Month in Daily City to celebrate Jewish Americans who contribute immeasurably to the fabric of American history, culture, science, education, and social justice, as well as observe this month with solemn remembrance of the six million Jews that have perished. So tonight, I know we have, I would like to meet if there's Ms. Myra and Al, Ms. Herpes. If you'll allow me to read a little bit about their bio and then allow them to speak. But first, would you like, Mayor, that the council makes comments? Or should I read the bios first?
Let's do the council first, and then we'll do the bios.
Okay, thank you. That's up to you, yeah.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Councilmember D. Giovanni, I want to say I think you had a large part to play in this awareness. And thank you so much, Mayor, for acknowledging. It can be pretty emotional because this is the first time, and I see Pam, you know, it really means a lot to you. So I'd like to thank you both for this. I'd like to thank the staff because in reading the wording of this proclamation, this is not done overnight. Some careful thought went into this. And Pam, you really put your heart and your feeling into this. I want to share something with everyone here. You know, I'm a prior law enforcement officer for 33 years. And working as a law enforcement officer, you deal with many, many cultures. And when you come to enforcing and doing the right thing, you also have to take in... you also have to take in consideration of the variables involved. The culture, the heritage. And what I pride myself on is trying to put myself in the shoes of the person that I am dealing with before making any decisions. I will admit, and this is why I'm a proponent for ethnic studies in schools and to educate our children as to history and the different cultures, which is so, so important. And what I'm sharing with you is that in high school, I had no idea what the Holocaust was. And that was in 1968. And it's not until recently, as of approximately eight years ago, well, during my career, where I had the chance to visit the Museum of Tolerance, that I learned a little something. And it's not only the Jewish people, but all of our community and people as a whole, the human being. And I made it a point to go onto Netflix and watch all movies pertaining to the Holocaust and the atrocities that was bestowed upon the Jewish people. And I was horrified. And this was a rude awakening for me. I believe that our city, Daily City, is very diverse. We recognize everyone. And this is a testament as to this proclamation today that we, as a city, as a community, as a council that's together to acknowledge something as important as this. So I thank you all and my profound respect and acknowledgement of the Jewish people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. and Mrs. Myra Herpe, David Setzer, Rachel Goodman. This is a special time to honor the Jewish American Cultural Month. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for putting this on the agenda. And Councilmember Di Giovanni, with your leadership on this. You know, as Daily City is hugely diverse, I want to thank all of you that are Jewish American that have contributed to so many facets of the fabric of our city and the United States and the world. It was at Jefferson High School where I learned about the atrocities during the Holocaust. I will never forget that class. And this was a pivotal time in that social studies class and really indented something in my mind that never again should anyone ever have to go through such atrocities. And I just want to say thank you all for what you give back to our communities and how much you give back to the city of Daily City.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Let's see, oops. I just want to also send my, you know, appreciations to the staff, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, for leading this path. As a person that teaches history sociology, ethnic studies, I do also support what Councilmember Glenn Sylvester said in terms of like really understanding where people are coming from. And I think that when we look at the atrocities and forms of oppression, a lot of these things didn't come out of thin air and it hasn't come out of a vacuum. But then there's history behind it of people othering people. And when you dehumanize other people, it justifies people's violence. And these are the things that, you know, I want to instill in our cities to, you know, be educated on all peoples and people's histories. There can't be no reconciliation without understanding the whole story. So let me see. So with that, are there any other comments from colleagues? Go ahead. Okay. So I'll hand it over back to Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of my colleagues for your comments. First, if they don't mind, for Al and Myra Herpes, they sent me a little bit about their bio. And then they can make their comments as I read all three of the recipients. And I want to thank them humbly for being here. And Stephen Stolti, yes, he deserves recognition for having had worked on this. He was very sensitive about working with me on this as well. And I really appreciate it. And I want to let you know, Stephen, I appreciate that. Thank you. So let me begin with Myra and Al Herpe. Daily City residents of 50 years are both children of Holocaust survivors. Myra Herpe was born in a refugee camp in Munich, Germany, after her parents were liberated from Auschwitz. Her parents met in a hospital in Germany. Myra's mother learned that she had one surviving family member, her father. She located her father in a hospital where he was roomed with another very ill survivor. She and her father's roommate married and had Myra, the oldest of three children. Alfred Herpe's parents were able to secure visas during this time to Shanghai, China, where they resided for nine years. When Alfred was born in Shanghai and came to San Francisco, he was only a year old. His parents had three children, one before Alfred in China, which people know that a lot of the Jewish people ended up in China because they were one of the only countries that accepted them, along with the Philippines, I'd like to add, who passed away before Alfred's birth. Myra and Alfred met at Lincoln High School in San Francisco. Alfred is a 20-year military veteran, I must say, Army and Navy veteran. Myra and Alfred married in 1967, raised their three beautiful children in Daily City. Alfred worked at Seaton Medical Center until his retirement in 1997. Both Myra and Alfred have been active in our Daily City community members, volunteering their time wherever possible. Alfred currently volunteers on the SS Jeremiah O'Brien. And I know he also volunteers with other veterans as well. While Alfred and their three children had bar and bat mitzvahs, so the people know at home, Myra was not allowed to have one because she was a woman. In 2012, Myra, along with seven others, courage women, became a bat mitzvah. Her family was there to support her. Their oldest grandson became a bar mitzvah three years ago. Their youngest grandson will become a bar mitzvah this summer. Myra and Alfred always appreciated the traditions and cultural aspects of Judaism. They believe it was important to show their children traditions that their parents were not allowed to honor because the events that occurred in Nazi Germany. They are grateful they could raise their children and celebrate traditions in a community like Daily City that welcomes and honors all residents from so many different backgrounds. So with that, I'd like to ask Myra and Al to speak before we speak to the other recipients, if they don't mind. Welcome, Myra and Al. I think they're on mute, Mayor.
Alan Myra, if you could unmute, the mute button should be on your bottom left. There you go.
Okay, I'll repeat myself. Again, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council. We appreciate the being honored for this event. And Pam did a good job reading the bio, which I think said a lot. And there's a lot more. Thanks, Pam.
Yeah.
But sometime in the future, when we can get together and get it live meetings, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. And they also have a lot of ritualistry to that. Next, I'd like to recognize David Setzer. David Setzer is one of our longtime employees of Daily City. He's a recreation program supervisor. He grew up in St. Francis Cerro Monte neighborhood with both his parents, Mike and Debbie, younger brother Aaron and his grandmother. His grandmother affectionately known as, I believe, as Faggy. Is that correct? Thank you. Loosely translated to "mighty little bird", ensured that the cultural and religious aspects of Judaism were passed on, not to mention a good number of secret family recipes, as we all know. In such a diverse city as Daily City, his heritage was reinforced as the cul-de-sac street he lived on, with only about 20 houses, which only had five other Jewish households. He attended Hebrew school, AZA Youth Group regularly, and had his bar mitzvah through the community at Beth Israel Judea on Brotherhood Way. In college at SFSU, he participated in programming at the LL House, worked with the Young Adult Division of the Jewish Community Federation, and visited Israel through the Taglet Earthworm Organization. David has been working for Daily City since his teens and has been working full-time for over 20 years in our beloved Department of Library and Recreation Services. And we are blessed to have him here and thank him for always having a Hanukkah, a little menorah every year. So with that, David, would you like to say something? And thank you for being here and accepting.
Well, thank you very much for having me. On Passover every year, you always ask the question, what makes this night different than any other? And any Jewish person around knows that's a standard question. But literally tonight, what makes this night different than any other is the fact that my culture and my history has been recognized for the first time and I'm here to accept it with my other family members here. Stop crying, Pam, please. The other thing is I cried twice now. Thank you. Um, when growing up in Daily City and being Jewish in the Bay Area, you've gotten to meet different rabbis over the years. And one rabbi one time told me a story. On Friday nights, it's tradition to break bread. And there's a lovely braided bread called a challah. And that braided bread is made of three pieces. And what he liked to teach, this rabbi, is these three pieces are connected, but they are also the Jewish history. It's the past, the present, and the future. I'm glad and happy to be sharing the present. Sorry. Day today here with you at council and accepting this with my, funny enough, my family member, Myra now. And I'm very happy that this is going forward and we get to see what the future of Judaism looks like within the community of the city of Daily City. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We're blessed to have you in our community. And especially, don't leave us at the recreation either. And I see Denise. Next, I'd like to recognize Rachel Goodman and a little bit about her bio. We were blessed to have her as she serves on our bicycle pedestrian committee, but also likes to be involved a little more than that. Is very active, Ms. Goodman. Thank you for being here. She moved to Daily City in 2014 after a couple of years in San Francisco. She previously lived on the East Coast, which is when she really got more involved with the community and wanted to do more. She became a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, hoping to make a change and have safer streets to walk on. She also has been an active volunteer with pre-COVID at the San Francisco Jewish Film Festival. When not volunteering, she loves to go to concerts, we know, seeing even more films, and would love for an indie theater to open in Daily City, which is a great idea, and spending the holidays with family and good Jewish home-cooked meals. And with that, Rachel, thank you for being here. And I would love to give you the floor and have you make whatever you would like to say.
Thanks, Pam, first off. I have to say thanks to the mayor and city council. But I did get notification of this when I was in LA at a museum. And like a typical Jewish girl, I was looking for a Jewish deli to go eat more food. And also, I got sick, so if I sound a little hoarse, yeah, part of the thing. But Daily City is actually to me in a lot of ways. My grandparents, one of them a Holocaust survivor, grew up in the city. And his sister spent most of her life in Daily City with her husband, their family. So I remember a lot of really drunken passovers. There's always a lot of wine to be drank. And I remember falling asleep under a table in Westlake, waking up really late and just like kind of wandering back into a car, going back home to Marin. And also, as I got older, a lot of Hanukks we spent with most of our family in Daily City. So Daily City has always had a special place for me. It's a pure coincidence that I moved here because after living in New York City and coming back here, my grandmother, who also lived in New York for a long time, as she was getting older, she said, oh, since you can't really afford San Francisco, have you ever thought about Daily City? And my first thought was, after living in New York, oh, there's no way. It's just too small. Her caretaker said, hey, Rachel, before you dismiss it, you may want to go back there and reconsider. And what do you know, between family and everything, I'm here in Daily City. And it's meant a lot to me to become really involved. Like Pam mentioned, that B-PAC Committee has a special place in my heart. And I keep bugging a few people that when a spot opens up on the library commission, that it has my name all over it. I live in the Daily City libraries. But I just wanted to say mostly thanks for this. Reading the proclamation really, like David said, brought tears to my eyes. It was hard to hear it just because we hear about with the Asian community and the Jewish community and just atrocity and atrocity and just so much hate in this world. So hearing this and seeing what we can do, it's a history, it's a proclamation, making a change, like it really warms my heart. So I don't want to bring tears to everyone's eyes again, but thank you so much. It really does mean a lot to me.
Thank you. And I again want to thank the mayor and Stephen and my colleagues for their comments because I think this is the first step of many that we can do. And you can see the thread as the mayor was saying that, and Councilmember Sylvester and all, that, you know, people have gone through a lot and the similarities. And maybe we can, you know, bring together all our cultures, is my goal, and to celebrate one another and to make sure that these atrocities never happen to anyone. And whether it's our Filipino community, AAPI, any of that's got to stop. So I totally agree that. And we'll be having coffee and we'll catch up on that. And to Mr. and Mrs. Herpe, who are the, believe it or not, they're the ones related to David Setzer that I didn't know. It's what a beautiful coincidence. And maybe at some point, Mayor, because on both sides, the AAPI culture and over in the Jewish community, as you can tell, there are stories to be told and documented. So I don't know, this is not the time for this. But I would love if we could gathering, we have such a beautiful diverse community, gathering these stories. I know we have the Congress where people record those stories. But it would be nice that we record those Daily City stories, the immigration stories of the people here, the beauty and fabric of our Daily City and have them somewhere. And like Tita Perla tells stories, or you know, aunties or lolos or lolos and and Jewish community, which we've lost quite a few members of already and so forth. So just putting it out there and we can talk about that later. But thank you all for being here. And you know how much I love you. Shalom. And this is a historic moment and very gracious. So we'll be moving forward for that. And there's a lot to do. And we will not have, never again. Thank you very much. And I hope you feel better. Thank you, Ms. Herpe and Mr. Herpe. Thank you, David. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And thank you, Mayor.
Right. Thank you, everyone. It's a great honor.
For those that haven't signed up, please, colleagues, I really hope you sign this. I think we only have, I know, I think they just got back from out of the country or wherever. If Councilmember Buena Ventura, it'd be great if you and Mayor Manalo, I know you've been very busy to have your signatures on this before it's given to them. Really, we'd like to have all of us to be united in this. It would be great. Thank you.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Di Giovanni.
And thank you for your comments.
It will be signed. It's, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right.
We always make sure it's signed. Thank you.
Most definitely. So moving forward with our agenda, revisiting item number one. Presentation of the fiscal year 2023 operating and capital improvement budget preview. I'll hand it over to Mr. Nevin.
Thank you again. Good evening again, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Can everyone see my? Can everyone see my presentation? And are there any notes on there? Sorry. Sorry about that. Um, so tonight for your review is a fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget preview. Staff will come back to you on June thirteenth for consideration.
Tim, we can still see two slides at once here. There you go.
There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Tonight I will be presenting the operating budget. Director Chu will present the capital budget and Director Piccolati will present capital projects with the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. After the operating budget preview, I will pause for questions or comments before handing it over to Director Chu. So as a quick background, when the COVID pandemic was in its early stages, council approved a rollover budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Last year, council approved a one-year budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And with tonight's budget preview and next month's budget adoption, staff is recommending another one-year budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Then later this year, uh, staff will make a recommendation to either continue with a one-year budget for next year or go back to the two-year budget cycle. This slide shows our budget calendar and work by city staff at least as far back as November of last year, culminating in the last two items, tonight's budget preview presentation and next month's budget adoption at the June thirty, June thirteenth city council meeting. In February of this year, we discussed the city's financial situation, projecting budget deficits out into the future. As part of that discussion, we looked at ten potential budget deficit strategies uh, that the city of Daly City and our neighboring cities have used during past economic downturns. And the next slide, I will go into detail about the seven budget deficit strategies the city has utilized for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. Before we look at those seven strategies, I will discuss three strategies on this slide that have not been utilized. First in the middle here in green, there have been no reduction of general fund CIP contributions. Needed CIP projects are included within fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. Next, on the bottom left, there have been no reductions assumed or budgeted for extra pension and OPEP contributions into one fifteen trust to help the city fund future liabilities. Those contributions totaling two million dollars are included in the budget. And last year on the bottom right, there is no current assumption in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget to reduce the workforce or city programs by attrition. The city has utilized seven of the ten budget deficit strategies for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget, including one, adopting a one-year budget, two, increasing revenues. In this budget, we are including small amounts for cannabis business revenue as well as an additional one million dollars in user fees that will be brought to the council for consideration in the next few weeks. Number three, evaluating salary and benefit increases. The current increases in the budget are lower than the last three-year labor contracts. Number four, minimizing increases to operating expenditures. Staff asked departments to have a goal of zero percent increases for operating expenditures. And while we are under multiple contracts citywide that increase annually, departments did a very good job keeping operating expenditure increases very small for this budget. Number five, freezing vacant positions. The positions that have been frozen remain frozen in this budget request for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Number six, no new programs or FTE. There are no new programs or FTE in this budget request. And seven, utilizing available fund balance in Fund Thirty-Three as well as ARPA funds to fund general fund contributions for the capital improvement program. Staff utilized Fund Thirty-Three last fiscal year as well. In February, we looked at projected budget deficits going out into the future. The projected budget deficit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three was six point three million dollars, keeping with the status quo and not incorporating any of these budget deficit strategies. As a result of implementing these budget deficit strategies to reduce pressure on the general fund, the city was able to decrease the projected budget deficit by three point eight million dollars down to two point five million dollars. And we will look at this projected deficit of two point five million dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three in more detail now. This chart is similar to charts we've looked at before. With this chart, we added a current fiscal year two thousand twenty-two estimate and the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget request. But starting from the far-left columns, fiscal year two thousand nineteen actuals and fiscal year two thousand twenty actuals, we see the last two years where we ended the year with a surplus. As we have discussed before, the next column, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one actuals shows an actual deficit of seven point seven million dollars. The last prior deficit was a decade ago in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. Resulting from the deficit in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, the reserves decreased by seven point seven million dollars to forty-five million, five hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. As we continue with projected deficits for this fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three requested budget, the reserves decreased even further down to forty-one million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is equivalent to four months of reserves. That is a decrease of approximately eleven point nine million dollars in reserves by the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and a decrease from seven months of reserves to four months of reserves in just three fiscal years. And just a note here on the slide in red is the minimum reserve policy of three months. We'll take a closer look at these last three fiscal years, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three in the next slide. The second column here is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. And next to this column to the right is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two current estimate. We budgeted fiscal year two thousand twenty-two with close to a nine point seven million dollar deficit. Analyzing actuals, we anticipate closing the fiscal year with a one point six million dollar deficit. The difference between the budget and the year-end estimate is largely due to salary savings from frozen and vacant positions. Uh, staff does not anticipate as high a level of salary savings next fiscal year due to the fact that the city started fiscal year two thousand twenty-two with a vacancy rate of nine percent and expect to end the year with a vacancy rate closer to five percent. We have less vacant positions today than we did at the beginning of the fiscal year in July two thousand twenty-one. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget, staff included a two percent vacancy factor as part of the assumptions for the budget. And one last thing to note on this slide is the difference between the expenditures in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and the estimate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the hundred and three million and the hundred and thirteen million dollars in the graph. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-two expenditures are expected to be ten million dollars higher than fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one actuals. Next, we'll look at a breakdown of general fund revenues for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. Property taxes are budgeted at close to fifty million dollars with thirty-five million dollars in property taxes and close to fifteen million dollars in vehicle license fee revenue. Included in the vehicle license fee revenues can be seen with the single asterix is five point two million dollars of VLF shortfall from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Without the state paying the shortfall from two fiscal years ago, the expected vehicle license fee revenue would be closer to nine point seven million dollars. Property taxes and vehicle license fee revenue together account for forty-two percent of general fund revenues. Before we move on from property taxes, I wanted to talk about one item being considered at the state level, and that deals with VLF shortfalls and excess ERAF. Excess ERAF revenue is included in the thirty-five million dollar property tax line. It represents roughly six million dollars in this budget. The state is considering changing state law to cap all excess ERAF revenue within San Mateo County at current levels. The state plans to use any increase above current levels each year to help fund future VLF shortfalls. Specific to Daly City, the county has estimated that our excess ERAF revenue would decrease by roughly half a million dollars next year and eventually decrease by more than six million dollars ten years from now in fiscal year two thousand and thirty-two. This is a significant hit to countywide revenues affecting the county itself and each city within the county. The county collected letters opposing this change in state law last week, and a letter from Daly City was included in the county's lobbying effort. Staff will keep the council in the loop when we hear updates from Sacramento on this item. Next on our list of general fund revenues are sales taxes, separated into two buckets, general sales tax revenue of seventeen million dollars and just over nine million dollars in Measure Q sales tax revenue. Together, the sales tax revenue is budgeted at just over twenty-six million dollars or twenty-two percent of the general fund revenues. Next are charges and fees. The budget is almost six million dollars in charges and fees. This includes roughly one million dollars of increases in user fees. And again, the user fee updates will be brought to your council for consideration and adoption probably the second meeting in June. Charges and fees account for five percent of general fund revenues, similar to the rest of the items on the slide, including business license tax, utility users tax, and franchise fees. This third item from the bottom from other agencies includes five million dollars in one-time ARPA funds. This slide lists the rest of what makes up the general fund revenues for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget request. Second from the bottom, program fees are fees for recreation programs. Total general fund revenues are one hundred and seventeen point seven million dollars. The next two slides show general fund expenditures by department. The bulk of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget amounts, more than seventy-five percent, account for salaries and benefits of department employees. In the notes column of these slides, you will see staff has called special attention to department functions. Some departments have increased budget requests due to special circumstances around projects, grant revenue, or other required work. For example, the city clerk's office incurs increased costs for election expenses during every even numbered year. And as the asterix indicates, all departmental budgets are subject to change pending ongoing labor negotiations. Budget assumes current council authority for cost of living increases and staff will see for any necessary budget adjustments when MOUs are finalized. This slide shows the rest of the city departments of their expenditures in the budget request. Total general fund expenditures are close to one hundred twenty point three million dollars. And as discussed last fiscal year, all Measure Q programs are budgeted here in the middle in the non-departmental budget. The budget for Measure Q programs is broken out in the next slide. Each fiscal year, as we look at the requested budget, we will show you the budgeted amounts for Measure Q programs. As usual, this list includes five Measure Q programs. However, the library and recreation programs consist of multiple programs, including expanded library hours, expanded recreation programming, and expanded senior services. When the current fiscal year closes this fall, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, staff will return to council to show you a breakdown of each dollar of Measure Q sales tax revenue received in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and each dollar of actual expenditures for these programs. Earlier, we looked at the general fund expenditures by department. And before we move on to next steps for the operating budget, this slide shows the requested budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three in the sanitation fund as well as the water fund. Together, the two funds total just over fifty-eight million dollars. And each fund has a small increase of only three percent compared to the last fiscal year. The next steps for the budget include bringing the full citywide budget for your consideration and adoption at the June thirteenth council meeting. Next staff will present new user fees for consideration, most likely for the second meeting in June. As mentioned previously, this represents the first time in most of the, most of these fees have been adjusted in almost a decade. Other next steps include continuing negotiations with the bargaining units. All labor contracts expire this year. Later this fall, staff will recommend continuing with a one-year budget for next year or returning to the two-year budget cycle. And lastly, staff intends to continue our ongoing discussion of long-term fiscal sustainability. Before introducing Director Chu, who will present the capital budget, I'll pause here for any questions or comments related to the operating.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Director Nevin, I had a couple of questions about, uh, first, let me go back to the, um, the reserve slide if I could. Okay, so I see the, the reserve in months, um, looks like for being the minimum that we've had to go through. Do you know if prior to two thousand nineteen, if we have reached the three-month level?
I don't know offhand, but I will, I will research that and get back to you. The, the policy I do know was just, uh, enacted, I believe, maybe three years ago.
Okay.
But I, I will look back, um, in history to see what the months have been at the end of each fiscal year.
And then could you, um, quantify for me what, in terms of dollars, what would one month in reserve result in us not having, uh, uh, in terms of the, the reserves? How much money does that mean?
That would mean, um, approximately twelve million dollars.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, when it came to, um, calculating the sales tax revenue that we would have, um, did you account for anything with, that had to do with the cannabis revenue?
Yes, we did include small amounts for, and sorry, that'd be about ten million for one month.
Okay.
And, um, we did include some smaller increases into this budget for cannabis businesses, knowing that they will probably open in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and once we have a better idea of what, uh, those businesses are bringing in, we can actually increase those, um, uh, projections if we need to at mid-year.
Okay, good enough. Thank you, Director Nevin. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Pamela Digiwani.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nevin, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions since it's projected numbers. Um, are you including, uh, the, any numbers when, um, like in salaries increases or I, I think I saw some numbers in there, were there frozen positions you were talking about? Is that included in this?
We have, uh, as we discussed last year for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget, we included, um, frozen positions in the, in the budget. Uh, this fiscal year, uh, frozen positions and projected vacant positions are also included in the budget. However, we did decrease the expenditure line, uh, for a two percent vacancy factor. Um, and that's another item that we could adjust at mid-year. Um, and we did do that last mid-year. We adjusted salary and benefit projections, and we also adjusted some revenues up, uh, increases in revenues that we saw at the mid-year point.
Okay, so the salary and benefit increases, is that including into anything that we would do with any kind of a increase in, in, in salaries coming up or just, just currently?
The budget, the current, uh, budget request includes, um, small increases to salaries and benefits that were in the early stages of labor negotiations. We have not concluded any labor negotiations, so, um, if we do conclude those and those lead to higher salaries and benefits, then we will adjust the budget accordingly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nevin. And then also real quick is just the, um, I see the ARPA, the ARPA funds or whatever. And then, um, like you said, we don't know, hopefully on the confirmation of the VLF, but hopefully we will get that confirmation soon. hopefully on the confirmation of the VLF, but hopefully we will get that confirmation soon, that we will not have to have that adjustment in the numbers for that, for the VLF, for the vehicle license fee. That would be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And the ARPA five million dollars for this fiscal year was shown here from other agencies.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nevin, for your report. I just have a couple of questions. This looks like the, you know, under a thirty thousand-foot level view, I'm sure that we can go deeper if we ask the right questions. Can you advise, when was the last time that Daly City went over its cost recovery and fees?
Right.
The last time that the city recovered more in fees than what it cost the city, is that your question?
No, my question is, it's been quite some time where the city has re-examined the fees. I am thinking that our fees are so low and in comparison to what other cities charge, and to maintain or to at least have cost recovery at a minimum, when's the last time has that report been done?
The, the last, I think, major update to fees was approximately nine, nine years ago, 2013. However, there have been fee increases since then in various programs. What we intend to do with the fee study that we just completed is to put together a master fee schedule that we can bring for consideration to to increase those fees as we go and not wait multiple years. The other thing that's recommended is, we did utilize a consultant this year to help us create that master fee schedule and also to calculate where cost recovery would come in on each fee, and we will bring those fees to you and present that back to you. We, as I mentioned, we increased revenues a million dollars in anticipation of having those fee increases. If it looks like we're going to be receiving more than just an additional one million dollars, it's another number that we can come back and adjust at mid-year. We plan on having those fees together in one schedule so that we can ask, bring those fees to you regularly for consideration rather than sporadically or infrequently.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing that information. Would this also include fines?
It does. It includes almost a full list of citywide fees. It's not every single fee, but it's, it's most of the fees that you're thinking of.
Okay, so I see that we are kind of like nine years in arrears, and we are due for an update. So looking forward to hearing more about that. Now, on the slide that you have up on the screen, now you talk about Measure Q and you're requesting nine point one million. It was my understanding that Measure Q was to bring in at least six point five million. So are you saying based upon changes or changes that are about to come down the line that we hope to get revenue of nine point one million?
So when the ballot measure was created for Measure Q, I believe the estimate at that time was around six million dollars of revenue that Measure Q had granted. When we budgeted fiscal year 2022, we had a little bit more information because we had three months' worth of actuals, and we had some. We, we meet with our sales tax consultant quarterly to go over all sales tax revenue in the city. At that time, we budgeted, I believe, seven million dollars in the beginning of fiscal year 22, and at mid-year, we increased that estimate to at least seven point five million, or just over seven point five million dollars in the mid-year budget adjustment that we brought to council. We are anticipating again, because of our quarterly meetings with our sales tax consultants, that we're projecting that we could be around just over nine million dollars in Measure Q revenue, which is our starting point and our budget, budget request amount for next year.
That's great to hear. So basically, nine point one million is a conservative amount?
Our sales tax consultant basically gives us really three numbers to use. We could go with the most conservative, we can go with the most optimistic, or we can go somewhere in the middle. We, we don't go for the most conservative number. We try to be as realistic as we can. And again, after, you know, two or three more quarterly meetings, it could warrant that that number could increase, and at that point, we would, we would bring that to you as a mid-year adjustment.
Great. So what, what does nine point one represent? A conservative, optimistic, or?
Actually, our, our sales tax consultant at this time told us that they had some fairly optimistic numbers, and that he would not use those in his predictions or in his projections. So we use somewhere between the most conservative and the most optimistic.
Okay, well, actually, I'm not giving the answer. I'm just wondering what the most optimistic number is.
Oh, offhand, I believe the most optimistic number, again, that was not advised to be used, was closer probably to ten.
Okay, okay.
That was, yeah, that was the most optimistic number for that.
Okay, it's really not much above the number that you provided. Thank you so much. Can you go to your slide on departments? Yeah, keep going. Okay, what caught my eye was police. And, you know, I, I, I need to quite understand what's going on there. It's such a high number, and I'm concerned about how much of that pertains to overtime, which seems to be mandatory every day. And that's due to the fact of we have less than minimum staffing. So can you, maybe not tonight, but at least provide information of that forty-six million? How much of that is overtime that's being paid out as opposed to salary savings? What we have saved in having less officers? What I'm looking for is if we had the complement of officers so that we don't need minimum staffing, maybe we can reduce our overtime. Just a thought.
Yes, I could provide a breakdown of what this budget request is with respect to to the department and how the breakout shakes out in terms of what is salaries, what is overtime, what is, what is in this number as a breakout?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Jessla Manello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for the presentation, Director Nevin. In regards to, I have a couple of questions here. I'd like to go over the slide, the slide that Vice Mayor Benaventura had in regards to the multi-year. Yes, this one right here. So in, in fiscal year 2022, the budget was, we had a, like a higher deficit compared to what we're estimating now. It's nine point six was budgeted, or that's what was considered a deficit. And now you're saying it's looking like one point five. What, what changed? Because I mean, that's, that's a pretty stark difference, and wanted to know if, what was the main change within, within the difference?
Sure. In, in looking at the, the budget for fiscal year 22 compared with the fiscal year 2022 current estimate, if we look at the revenue line item, not, not a really big difference between what was budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year and what is estimated to come in in terms of revenue for, for this year. We budgeted one hundred and ten point eight million dollars, and look to come in at maybe one hundred and eleven point six. So that's not a big difference on the revenue side, but the increase in revenues of almost a million dollars helps to decrease that nine point seven million dollar original budget deficit. So a million dollars of that nine point, of that decrease from nine point seven to one point six, a million dollars is because of increased revenue.
And would that be the dollars we receive federally?
No, those were already accounted for. This would just be some minor increases in, in some taxes that came in that were just slightly higher than what was anticipated previously. But it's not, ARPA funding was budgeted originally, and it's currently still budgeted, so.
Okay, perfect segue. I, I, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to explain the, the expenditure side of that equation. So the expenditures were budgeted originally at a one hundred and twenty million point four, and look to be coming in closer to one hundred and thirteen point two at this point. That is mostly due to salary savings. And that is also one of the reasons why we're including a two percent vacancy factor for fiscal year 2023 budget for one hundred and twenty million point two, which is just actually slightly less than the original budget for last year, 2022 original budget. Sorry, you have another comment?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I wanted to comment on, you said, some of the, the, I think, revenue that we received. I wanted to know in regards to property taxes, how are we going about ensuring that we get kind of an accurate, in order for us to, for our projections, our actuals? How are we making sure that we have, you know, actual property, you know, a good projection around our property tax? I mean, I know obviously, you know, the pandemic happened, but there's still, I, I still see like homes being sold, et cetera. And so how are we accounting for ensuring we're capturing that when we do our projections?
That's a, thank you for that question. So we have a couple sources, and they're mainly county sources because that's where the property tax revenue is paid to the county and then transferred to the city. So we, we monitor the county's controller's website. The, and we also have meetings. We have lots of meetings locally with all the finance directors in the county, and the county comes and presents, and they present on where they think property tax revenue is going. So that's one of the ways that we predict what the property tax typically increases would be. But in the past, as we've seen, there have been property tax decreases and economic downturns. But that's how we get most of our information is directly through the county's database, where we can see parcels within Daly City and where those are tracked.
And, and so when, when do you track it along the year? Is it twice a year, you know, in order to make sure our projections are on track?
Yes, we, we track it regularly. However, we do get good guidance from the county in terms of when they do lock in the property taxes for a given year and then send out the bills in December and April. So we'll know what their locked-in number is, and that's the number we put in for our projections. We put in what the actual bills are going to be.
Okay, and then from what you've seen in regards to this year, the year prior, is there a trend in it increasing?
There is a trend for property tax revenue to be increasing. In talking with one of a financial auditor, he thinks that there will be an, there will be a housing market adjustment in the next two years. We don't project out in this budget request or even next fiscal year, a lowering of property taxes until we would get information from the county that shows a trend in a downward direction. So we are projecting increases to property tax revenue.
Okay, well, that, that's good to hear, because I think we want it to, hopefully, that's one of our major sources. And when looking around that their homes are still being sold, the developments that we approved that are now being built, I mean, I think some of them are at this juncture. At first, they were coming to one point three million, and now they're at, I think, one point seven, being sold for one point seven. So I mean, I mean, adding all of those, you know, you know, obviously, those, I'm looking at, we're looking at macro level, but seeing that that's still happening within the city. That's just one of my concerns, understanding that, you know, majority of our resources come from our property taxes and, and sales taxes. So I wanted to see where we were at in that, and I appreciate you the clarification on how you make sure to monitor kind of like what's happening at the county, because we would want to have close to accurate amount of projection so that when, at the end of the year, we don't have so much, if, if anything, it's always great to have a surplus at the end of the year, but that the gap is actually closer to what we projected. Thank you. And then one last question is also, I think it'd be helpful in order to have a breakdown for our June approvals is, is what was mentioned earlier, if we can have line items in regards to the department requests, exactly kind of what those entail is very helpful, I think, in order to understand exactly where the needs are in, in approving the budget. Thank you very much, Director Nevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessla, Councilmember Jessla Manello. Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Nevin. Similar to the property tax question, but also one, you know, when we did our ordinance on the Airbnbs and all those things that are similar to that, how much monies are we bringing in on that, and is it still being tracked? Are we still contracting with that entity in Redwood City, I believe it was, to help us keep track of so many of them that are supposedly registering? And I know we had a COVID, so it probably took a little bit of dip. But how are we doing on, on those particular short-term rentals?
Yes, we still, we do still have that contract, and we are seeing with respect to revenue, which is closely aligned with transit occupancy tax, TOT tax, that those are, the bottom happened already with COVID, and now those revenues are, are increasing for most cities. So that, that is a good thing to follow.
Right, so yeah, with rejection. Thank you. Also, another quick question is, when you go to the numbers of the fire in the personnel area, could you bring us the, the council, I think, when we, is it included, when people retire, like North County Fire Authority or any of that, because I know we deal with three, with three other, two other cities, the breakdown of who's responsible for paying those that retire? And then for some reason, who are they that get a one-year contract after they retire? And how much does that cost us in revenue? And how, how many people are on a one-year contract in that particular area after they retired?
Okay.
And then one more thing, I think, and thank you very much. I know it's a lot, a lot for you to get for us. The other question is, on that particular note, was on the, when we break down the numbers for the frozen positions, could you bring those as well? And also, I, I guess when I look at these projections, it's a good idea that we don't have any new positions online, other than the ones, I know that there's some that have to be replaced. A replace such as I know the guy that deals with our lights in parks. There there were used to be three specialists. In that area that dealt with our streetlights and now we only have one. So that's pretty bad, but any new positions. Um, I would say, I don't know about my other council members. Any new positions that are not attributed should really not occur. In uh, departments that are just like newly created positions. You know, because we really have a long thing to go through here. So that would be my suggestion that hopefully that no one's thinking of hiring anyone in their departments. Um, adding to other than, you know, the people that retire and that we, you know, necessary, that's all the, all that's important. But anything that's developed new from anything else. But thank you very much.
Sure. And then um. New positions would would uh. Would come to you for approval as well, but also the one budget strategy of the seven that were utilized for this. Budget, no new physicians or FTE, so that is, that is something that's included.
I mean, I was, yeah, I don't, I don't mean so that people know clear. It was great because we did the measure Q for the library and the and the recreation and all that. That's definitely, that definitely because we we made a commitment to do that. But as we go through this process, because we have so many people that retired, as we knew they would. That those important positions, you know, they're gonna have to try to hire specialists, which is difficult to find anyway. Um, with all those years' experience, but definitely are needed in our city. Um, for those certain departments that um, maybe they can put in what exactly they need because it is on a. Short end when they have specialists and then. Um, it's hard, it's very difficult, like wastewater, they train. They can't, and then they, some of those people go to San Francisco. So it's twenty thousand dollars to train them, but uh, then they go to San Francisco, so. But we need to keep everybody working. But thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mr. Nevin, a lot of work. But thank you and to your department as well and to the city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Thank you to all staff for putting this together. Um, I appreciate all their hard work and.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Manalo, I have another question.
Oh, Councilum, um, Member Justin Manalo.
Yeah, um, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Nevin. Um, one thing I I would love to know is. From um, the increase, we did do some increase of fees. Um, such as the TOT tax and also the business license fee. Um, and also um, when when cannabis is. Implemented or or they open up, that that would also be a source of revenue. I think. It would be great to understand from the increase how much that has helped. Obviously, it's incremental, um, but always looking at ways to. Increase uh, revenue opportunities for the city. And so that was um, also. Another opportunity and vehicle to do so. And I'd like to know if there's any way to. Capture how much that has helped a- along the way. Thank you very much, Director Nevin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Thank you, the staff, Mr. Nevin. Um, y'all really did your homework. And I know there's a lot of things that um. Need to be addressed, all the, all the different things from my colleagues, so I appreciate you all for putting this. Um, budget together and hopefully. We all have more information and we'll move forward um, with a a budget. Um, for next fiscal year. Thank you again. All right, so moving on with the our agenda. We have uh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Director, I would like to introduce.
Oh, yeah.
You to just discuss capital.
Mm-hmm, go right ahead. I forgot, Mr. Chu.
Okay, just let me get this started here. All right, can everyone see my slides? Okay, great. Well, thank you, Tim, and good evening, Dr. Mayor and council members. Um, I will now go over one of the most exciting parts of my job, and that's putting the capital improvement program together. Uh, for council consideration. And this is where we get to look at all the fun projects that the city will be doing for the benefit of the public. The capital improvement program, uh, it's a long term planning tool. Uh, for the city to plan major public improvement projects needed in the future. The program will allow the city to coordinate the financing, timing. Of the many capital projects needed. It provides the project description, funding requests, funding source. And project schedule for each project. Uh, while the program goes out multiple years. Uh, only the fiscal year twenty twenty three is proposed for council consideration. We're only doing a one year budget cycle, so only twenty twenty three is being considered. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty three. We're proposing a total capital budget request of just under seventeen point seven million dollars. Uh, this slide shows the funding requests by funding source. So we're proposing a little bit. Uh, less than three million dollars of general fund transfers. Um, just about one million dollars in grants and developer contributions. One point seven million dollars in Measure A, half cent sales tax. A four hundred and seventy thousand of Measure M. And this is part of the vehicle registration. Uh, about one point one million dollars in Measure W. Um, that's the county half cent sales tax. Another six hundred and thirty thousand uh, from the public facilities fees. Four point four million from sanitation. Uh, two point eight million from SB one dollars. Uh, just about a million dollars uh, from the solid waste franchise fees dedicated for Muscle Rock landfill. Uh, and then also uh, one point uh, five million dollars uh, from the water fund. As I mentioned earlier, the capital improvement program goes out multiple years. So let's take a look at the five year forecast. For fiscal year twenty twenty three. The total proposed budget request, as I mentioned, is just under seventeen point seven million dollars. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, the total budget needed is just under twenty three million dollars. For twenty twenty five. Right about thirty million dollars. Twenty twenty six, twenty nine million dollars. And twenty twenty seven, thirty nine million dollars. The fiscal year twenty twenty three budget request broken down by project type is shown here. Uh, we have sixteen projects from the traffic and transportation category totaling seven point six million dollars. We have eight projects from the facilities category totaling two point two five million dollars. Uh, two projects from the muscle rock category, that's the portion of the solid waste franchise fee, that's just over a million dollars. Uh, three projects from the. Excuse me, three part uh, project from the parks category totaling seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, and then we also have eight projects um, in the water category, one point one six million dollars. Uh, and finally, twelve projects from the sanitation category. Uh, four point seven six million dollars. So in total, we have forty nine projects. Uh, totaling seventeen point six seven million dollars. Uh, on the next several slides, we will go into the specific projects proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Um, for transportation and traffic projects, uh, we have the ADA barrier removal project. Uh, this is a project um, to help address some of the barriers identified in the self evaluation and transition plan. Uh, we also have crosswalk improvements. Uh, these are improvements um, for pedestrian safety. Uh, coming out of our ped bike master plan and our systemic safety analysis uh, reports. Uh, next we have South Gate Ave and School Street improvements. Uh, this is a a project that we have some uh, federal grant money for to help do improvements for. Uh, pedestrian safety uh, type projects on on those two corridors. Uh, we also have the traffic uh, signal and streetlight improvements. This project helps fund. Traffic head replacements, um, some uh, interconnect wiring, uh, painting of of our streetlights. Um, and and other miscellaneous improvements. Uh, cooperative project development. Uh, this is where we uh, utilize some of the funds to help. Prepare applications for grant projects. Uh, and also for um, some matching funds we we pull from this cooperative project as well. Uh, the next project is uh, RO five seven two conversion. Uh, this is one of our RO areas in the Westlake uh, area. Uh, and we're working on a project to convert that over to a parallel circuit to make it more reliable. Uh, the next project, John Daly and Skyline Boulevard intersection safety improvement. This is another project that we were successful in receiving grant funding for. And this will, this will greatly improve the safety of that intersection of John Daly and and Skyline. Uh, ADA sidewalk improvements. Uh, this uh, project helps fund uh, tripping hazard repair. Um, curb ramps, um, other miscellaneous types of um, sidewalk and and curb work, repair work that's needed. The Desacu Iketa Canyon uh, or Avalon Canyon, uh, site maintenance. Uh, this is a project that was previously approved. We're requesting some additional funding. Uh, the access road needs to be repaired, uh, as well as some of the storm drain retention basin needs to be cleaned out. Uh, Westlake Street Slurry Seal, this is just part of our ongoing seven year Slurry Seal Program. Uh, for the Westlake area. Uh, and then the next three projects are street resurfacing projects to help. Uh, maintain our streets, do a an asphalt overlay uh, to try to extend the the useful life of of the pavement. Uh, a few other projects for traffic and transportation, um, Ceremony Boulevard. Uh, State Route One on and off ramp, a traffic signal installation. Uh, we got some developer contribution, so we're assigning the funds to that. Uh, same thing with the Clarinada Avenue, uh, State Route One, uh, on and off ramp, a traffic signal installation. And then we're also proposing the the Lake Merced Boulevard and South Gate, uh, traffic signal installation. Um, and we also have some uh, developer contributions for that as well. And all of those projects total seven point six million dollars in traffic and transportation projects. Um, staff will also be proposing uh, to council at the um. Uh, June thirteenth meeting to postpone. Uh, the Calan Boulevard and Ceremony Center driveway traffic signalization project. Uh, and return uh, those funds back to fund balance. Um, we have other higher priority projects. Uh, and so uh, we're proposing to to do, for example, Lake Merced. Uh, prior to uh, the Calan Boulevard Ceremony Center driveway project. Uh, now going to some of the facilities projects. We have the uh, training center for Station ninety four. Um, the uh, proposed admin for Station ninety four will be relocated, and so as a result of that. Um, uh, they can uh, they're gonna repurpose it and and make it uh, into a. Uh, a training center and um, there's funding for that. Uh, also at Station ninety four is sleeping quarters upgrades. Uh, at that station as well. Uh, Fire Station ninety one, uh, there's a need for a new roof replacement. Um, there's also proposed to do uh, automatic safety gates at Fire Station ninety one, ninety four and ninety five. Uh, primarily for security reasons. Uh, Fire Station ninety one, uh, the driveway work needs to be redone. Just due to the deterioration of the asphalt. Uh, Lawson Hall uh, needs some additional rehab in terms of siding work, roofing work. Also, we have our ADA facility upgrade projects. This is also out of our self evaluation and transition plan. Uh, that was done by the consultants that identified. Uh, all of the city facilities that uh, needed uh, certain types of ADA upgrades. And so. Um, this is a programmatic uh, uh, funding request to spend about a million dollars to to. Start addressing some of those issues. Uh, and then the last facility type project is uh, redoing the pergola at the Imagination Station. Um, just due to age, um, the repair work needs to be done there. Uh, and then uh, we have two projects at Muscle Rock. Uh, one is the. Waste mitigation and stabilization uh, for about nine hundred thousand. And then just the ongoing routine site maintenance for Muscle Rock at about a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, we have three park projects. Um, the first two are outdoor fitness courts, uh, one at Lincoln Park and one at Westlake Park. Uh, we we do have a a grant for for those projects as well. Uh, and so these will be a nice additions for those two facilities. Uh, the last one is the Westlake Park cupboard material storage. Um, this is in regards to um, the the new Senate bill for uh, compost uh, and 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 moach. And so. The proposal is to um, build a cupboard, a storage area to facilitate that. Uh, for the next two slides, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to water and wastewater staff to go over the water and sanitation projects.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Honorable Mayor, Dr. Rod, Vice Mayor Buena Ventura. Honorable Councilmembers Manalo, Sylvester, D. Giovanni. As you know, DWWR. Uh, manages the water and sanitation funds. Those are enterprise enterprise funds and they're rate driven. And tonight, um, Senior Management Analyst Anthony Tofiga. Will present the department uh, capital projects to the council. Um, Anthony works closely with all the divisions in budget development, tracks revenues and expenditures. In both capital and operating accounts. He works closely with other departments. Including uh, the Finance Department and Utility Billing. Also present tonight is Assistant Director Joshua Cosgrove. And um, also some division managers for technical if if we gotta get into any technical issue. So. Um, at this point, if Richard stops sharing, we have a couple slides that the the same slides, so. Um, Anthony will share his screen. So I'd like to introduce you to Anthony Tofiga and. Um, he'll present. Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Can uh, everyone see my screen okay? All right. So again, um, my name is Anthony Tofiga, Senior Management Analyst with the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. Uh, good evening, honorable council members. Um, I'll be introducing our fiscal year twenty twenty three CIP projects for our Water Enterprise Fund. And our Sanitation Enterprise Fund. So I'll go ahead and start with our water projects. The first is our citrus pump station generator replacement for two hundred thousand. Uh, the existing uh, generator is beyond its useful life and needs to be replaced. It's well over thirty years old. Uh, second is the Point Pacific Generator Replacement for seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, it's provides emergency power for the pump station. Uh, and that as well is uh, thirty years uh, old as far as the existing equipment. Uh, third is the Reservoir Five B Structural Rehabilitation Project for one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that is to help maintain water quality and storage protection. Um, next is the Plant Improvements Project for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that is to replace failed pumps and motors uh, that are unforeseen. Uh, next is the Well Rehabilitation Project for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that is to remove, repair or replace uh, well equipment at the city's wells. Uh, next is reservoir fencing for one hundred thousand dollars. And that is to replace security fencing at the city's various reservoirs. Uh, next is the Hydro pneumatic tank replacements project for one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's to purchase and install uh, new tanks uh, at the pressure zones in upper elevations. Uh, last is the Equipment Vehicles Project for forty thousand dollars. And that is to supplement scheduled replacement of vehicles. Total water projects for fiscal year twenty twenty three that are being requested are one million, one hundred sixty five thousand dollars. Next, I will go over our sanitation projects. Uh, first is the street resurfacing water mains for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is to replace valves and manhole covers as part of the annual pavement and slurry seal projects. Next is the SCADA system upgrades for five hundred thousand dollars, provides remote communication system wide. Next is the sewer main rehabilitation improvements project for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is for emergency and unanticipated. That is for emergency and unanticipated replacements and repairs. Next is the Rehabilitation of twenty seven inch, excuse me, twenty seven inch final effluent force main for three hundred thousand dollars. And that is to continually upgrade over six thousand feet of pipeline. Next is the Plant Irrigation Mixer Upgrade Project for one million, six hundred thousand dollars. And that is a mandated quality improvement at the treatment plant. Next is the S S M P Master Plan System Improvements Project for five hundred thousand dollars. And that helps provide funding for design work system wide. Next is the Sewer Lift Station Rehab Replacement Project for one hundred twenty thousand dollars. That's to provide equipment upgrades. Next is the Vehicle Upgrades Project for forty thousand dollars. To provide supplement, excuse me, to supplement scheduled vehicle replacements. Next is the Plant Process Improvements Project for three hundred thousand dollars. And that is for the replacement of pumps and motors that are unforeseen. Next is the Plant Structure Improvements Project for one hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That's for the repair of tanks and vaults. Next is the Treatment Air, excuse me, Treatment Plant Air Scrubbers Project for six hundred twenty five thousand dollars. And that's to help maintain odor control here at the plant and neighboring neighborhoods. Last is the Plant Electrical Instrumentation Upgrade Project for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that supports ongoing electrical system improvements. Total sanitation fund projects are four million, seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. Any questions regarding the capital improvement project, excuse me, capital improvement program budget for. Department of Water and Wastewater Resources or Mr. Richard Chu and his department as well?
Thank you, Mr. Tofiga. We have some comments, questions from Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your presentation. I have a few questions. Our first one, I'll direct to Mr. Chu. Out of your S B project, S B one projects, how much of that is coming out of the. If any, for the grants from S B one, or is this a city match?
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. The, the S B one projects, those are all funded from the S B one funding received by the city. So there isn't a matching for that.
Okay, good, because I'm seeing these numbers here and it says amount requested. Basically, this is just a presentation to show the projects coming. And the actual amount that the city would have to put out would be, say, in the case of S B one, the city would not be putting out anything. Is that correct?
The city will be using our S B one allocations to fund the project. The amount may change based on actual bid numbers. But yes, correct.
Got you. And before I go on to water and wastewater. I understand that there's an enterprise fund. And can any amount of monies be used from the enterprise fund for the C I P?
So yes, the, the water projects and the sanitation projects, those are using enterprise funds. From, from the Water and Sanitation Fund. So those are being funded out of those enterprise funds.
Got it. And for Mr. Piccolotti. I didn't see a slide on the current balance existing on, in the enterprise fund. Is there some way that we can obtain that?
Yes, sir. Totalling about forty million, twenty seven in the sanitation fund and about twelve point five in the water fund. Roughly.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Mr. Tofiga, I noticed on a couple of slides, you mentioned vehicle upgrades. Are these separate vehicles? I mean, first of all, I think the amount is very low. However, I do see a duplicate entry on two of your slides. Or you know, is this in the fact? You were just parsing them out based upon the type of vehicles and department, or was this overall?
Well, yeah, for the, we do have one separate fund for water projects as far as vehicle replacement. And then we do have a separate one for the sanitation fund as well, both at forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Just if I may.
Yeah.
Councilmember. That, the, the vehicle amount shown does not represent the entire vehicle fund that the contributions made through both sanitation and water. This is the supplemental. If there's additional equipment needed in the vehicles, that is, we already contribute to the vehicle fund. This is for additional, sometimes equipment, specialized equipment costs more. The vehicle prices went up several different factors is why there's amounts included in the capital.
Excellent point. Thank you so much. I see further on the agenda that we have a request to approve. New street sweeping machines. Where would those funds come from?
I'll let Mr. Chu answer that one.
Okay.
Yes, the, the street sweeping would come out of the operating budget from the Streets Department.
Okay, so I guess there's no. Money set aside or for these units. It doesn't have a particular fund, I guess, huh?
Councilmember Sylvester, there is a fleet fund where all of the fleet vehicles. Are in through internal services charges, various departments pay into that fleet fund. And so that's where vehicles are purchased out of. And the street sweeper will be purchased out of the fleet fund through contributions made from the Streets Division.
That's, oh, now I learned something new tonight. So Mr. Nevin, I guess he can provide that information. You know, I'm looking as to where we have funds, no matter where they are. And what I'm getting tonight on this budget presentation is budgeting certain allocations for different services and capital improvement. But I'm not getting any information as to the current status of funds that we have available. And I guess this is the first that I've found out about a fleet fund. And you know, it would be great to have all that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Sylvester, if I may, just to talk briefly about the fleet fund. So the fleet fund is set up for two purposes. One is to expenditures within the motor vehicle division for maintenance of vehicles. And secondly, for the purchase of new vehicles. So each department in the city that has vehicles, has a fixed charge where they are contributing to the fleet fund. And those payments into the fleet fund pay again for those two things. The motor vehicle division within Public Works as well as the purchase of new vehicles. In certain situations, as was discussed with the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. They may need to add certain things to vehicles. And they will do that directly out of the water fund or out of sanitation fund. Those were fairly small amounts in terms of vehicle replacements. Those are much larger amounts. We did have a study done a few years ago that the city received. Showing what a city of our size with our size fleet should have as available reserves in our fleet fund. And that report showed that our fleet fund is underfunded fairly significantly. So over the next, I would, if we go back to a two-year budget cycle, my prediction is it's going to be the next four. To five two-year budget cycles. Where we could even approach the level that is recommended in that report. And it may be that the city of Daly City doesn't have the resources to have a reserve level in the fleet fund of what it should be. But as long as we can have reserves in our fleet fund and replace vehicles every year when they're due for replacement. That's what we're currently doing and we're currently looking at how we can add to the fleet fund reserves to augment those in the future.
Thank you so much. That's a great answer. But I think for fully complete transparency, I think council should be provided. Information as to what exists in the fleet fund now. And, and with your recommendations, how we can either maintain the reserves or replenish it. And I think that would be a good part of the budget process. But we need to have that information so that, you know, we would like to help you folks out as well. And there's places we need to be cut, which is, I'm seeming to get the gist of what's going on here tonight. I would need to have all of that information. Enterprise Fund, Fleet Fund, and all the other funds that hasn't been made available to us. I mean, I would extremely appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. And, and we do provide. Last year's budget and this year's budget will do the same. We provide the, those amounts for all the funds. But you're correct, when, when I come to you and present, it's typically, typically going to be general fund focused. And then as Mr. Director Piccolotti and his department, those will be enterprise fund focused. And, but we could definitely expand our discussions to talk about more funds. I'd love to give you more information regarding particulars to many more funds that exist in the city besides the general fund. The general fund being, of course, the largest and, you know, fund in the city. And there's a lot of situations and issues that we need to bring to your attention and focus on so that we can. Focus a lot of our energies on the general fund. However, in my department, we focus on every fund and look at the health of every fund and continually do that. But we will provide you, when you actually approve the budget, numbers regarding every fund and every budget amount for those funds. Because that's what you'll be adopting at that time is not just the general fund, not just the water fund, not just the sanitation fund, but every fund.
Excellent, Mr. Nevin. I thank you so much. You know, as I'm thinking in the future, you know, I know specialized vehicles can really hit us hard. And I think the street sweeping vehicle is a specialized vehicle. I think a fire truck is a specialized vehicle. And, you know, police vehicle upgrades. And, and you know, it would just be nice just to have that information and to know. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Yeah, and if I may, just add to that, Councilmember Sylvester, for the capital projects and the various funding sources. We do review the proposed projects and make sure that there is sufficient funding to cover the requested projects. Most of those funds are restricted or semi-restricted in regards to, they have to be used for transportation type projects. Or water projects or sanitation projects. The only exception to that, as Director Nevin mentioned, is the transfers from a general fund. And so for this proposed year, it's, it's close, just under three million dollars in general fund. The rest of them are restricted funds, whether they be grants or dedicated for transportation or enterprise funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Next up is Councilmember Justin Manado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the Capital Improvement Program Budget, I, I do want to pull up the slide if we can, Director Chu. In regards to the, let's see, I think there's line items. In regards to the R O, I think it was seven hundred, seven hundred thousand? I was in a meeting. Sorry.
There you go. This is R O five seven two.
Yes, yes, the conversion. That's seven hundred thousand and you mentioned it would be in the Westlake area in regards to the conversion. And I think that's great that, that, that's finally going to be converted. I know it's been a major issue for many residents out there, especially around it. Just always having no, no light and, and like the delay with having it repaired by Bee Genie, et cetera. With this R O conversion, do you think that this is a pilot program to be able to convert other areas that still have the R O platform?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Daly City, we have fifteen R O zones. This is one of them. This is a relatively small one that we can do to, to use as a pilot. The future conversions of additional R Os definitely will be needed. However, the cost of these conversions are very expensive. The seven hundred thousand is not the total cost. We had some previous budget allocations for this project. However, additional funds are needed. So it's going to be easily, you know, over one point five million dollars for each, each conversion. But hopefully with this conversion, we can, you know, salvage some parts and also kind of continue to maintain our other R O areas. While we look for additional funding to, to do more conversions.
That's great, Director Chu. I know your department looks heavily and relies and, and is. Instrumental in looking for grants, et cetera. I know there's infrastructure grants out there and I don't know, maybe that would be like some federal grants. That we would be able to avail. I know it's been a long time coming and I'm, I'm, it's great to see that this is a pilot program that's happening. But obviously, it's a huge feat, but little by little, in order to tackle this, I think that would be amazing. I guess my request is if there's any infrastructure dollars that would be helpful federally or statewide. I, I would love to see kind of some efforts towards that. Because I know this has been kind of, you've heard it all this, for many times now. You've got, you've got in the emails and, you know. And so I think it's a long time, a long-term project, but also I'm so glad you're already working on it. Much appreciated. And keep us informed if maybe there are federal or state grants that would be able to help in this regard. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Manalo. And I've been working very closely with City Manager's Office specifically in regards to additional funding. Whether they be federal or state funding specifically for R O conversions through infrastructure type projects. So we are actively pursuing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manado. We have Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Mr. Chu and Mr. Piccolotti. And where is the other gentleman? Can't see over here, but anyway, thank you for the clear. I would like a little bit, I have to agree with Mr. Sylvester. Is there any way to get more breakdown on Mr. Nevin in particular? Probably not more of a, I would say departmental, each department. Like Councilmember Sylvester, I think he said eloquently, we're here to help. You know, with guiding or I know everyone knows how to run the thing. But if we can, if the more we know, the more we can, and break it down. We can maybe come up with some things to help fund each department. I know each department has so many needs. And so if you could break down the numbers of each department and find out really what their needs are. And see how we can really help them. Because it's been quite a struggle, as you can see from your books. And you guys have been trying to figure things out for each department to keep things running in our city. And without going back in the history and what happened where workers were cut from a long time ago. Under different leadership. But we're, we're, we're here to help. So if you could bring us more of a breakdown of each department, I think it would be greatly, greatly appreciated. But thank you for, I know it's a lot of work and for all of you, I appreciate everything. And I'll be given an update as well on, on something that's happening in the C I P area forthcoming when the budget is given. Thank you very much. And thank you for looking for all those funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I like to commend my colleague, Justin Manalo, for bringing up the issue on our, the R O project. And matter of fact, I did make a note to ask about that. And I'm glad I had this opportunity. Anyway, we all know about the issue about the streetlights going out in Daly City. And Mr. Chu, please correct me if I am wrong. The streetlights run on a. The streetlights run on a series circuit. And this program to address that so that we have less outages is moving forward to putting those circuits on a parallel circuit. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Sylvester, that's absolutely correct. Once we are able to convert it over to a parallel circuit, if there's an issue with one streetlight, it will only impact that one streetlight as opposed to impacting the entire neighborhood. So yes, that's absolutely correct.
Outstanding. So I wouldn't really say it would be a conversion. It would be more of an upgrade. Or what I'm getting at is our streetlights are archaic, and we have new technology out there, say, for instance, converting over to LED, which is more energy efficient. Will we be looking to obtain quotes? And, you know, I just hate to, well, if they were on a series circuit, if one goes out, they would still all go out. So I guess I'm looking at not throwing money after bad, but that we do need to move over to the parallel circuits. But is the city considering becoming more efficient in obtaining LED circuit lights?
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Sylvester. For the streetlights that we have in Daly City that are not series circuits, all of those streetlights have been converted over to LED already. In terms of conversion of the series circuit streetlights to parallel circuits, we will, at the same time, convert those to LED, once we are able to get them onto a parallel circuit.
Excellent. Thank you for the update, Mr. Chu, and I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yeah, I just wanted to let my colleagues know, I didn't know it was going to be this time or another time. But with Mr. Chu and Steven Stoltz, the city manager, that I met, I had the CPUC con along with BGNE and to really investigate and see if we can make things a priority on the streetlights. I'll keep you abreast of what happened, because it became such an emergency for someone I knew that when I called, the people at CPUC and they coordinated, they came right away. So moving forward, that is hopefully going to be addressed. We don't know yet. But I will definitely keep everybody in the loop for sure, and thank the city manager as well. Thank you.
Seeing no comment, seeing no comments or questions from my fellow colleagues, I just want to say thank you to the whole staff. Mr. Nevin, Mr. Chu, Mr. Piccolati, Mr. Tofiga, everybody for putting together that very comprehensive budget outlook. And we're all looking forward to finding ways that we can find a reasonable pragmatic budget moving forward. Thank you. Okay, so moving forward on our agenda, we have approval of minutes for a regular meeting of May 9, 2022.
Glenn Sylvester, a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Get a second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
A motion by Justin, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Glenn Sylvester, a second.
We have a second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda unless there are items that want to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to pull item number 12 and item number 11. Actually, nine, 11, and 12.
Nine, 11, and 12. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the consent? Oh, Councilmember Pamela Giovanni.
Sorry, I was going to say the same thing as Councilmember Manalo, thank you, Councilmember Manalo, but also add 13.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, but pulling the items nine, 11, 12, and 13?
Glenn Sylvester, with the exception of items nine, 11, 12, and 13, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and a second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Let's move to item number nine. Oh, my bad. Motion to approve.
Aye.
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 Oh, I mean, my bad. All those in favor, say aye. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so item number nine, authorizing American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, SLFRF, allocation agreements for small business assistance.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Nice to see you all. The item for you this evening is a follow-up to your previous adoption of a budget plan for the use of received American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds via the approval of Resolution Number 21-158. So regarding small business support, Council's adopted budget plan approved an $830,000 allocation for small business support via a $330,000 allocation to support Daly City businesses that qualified for the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program and a $500,000 allocation to support Daly City businesses that qualified for the SMC Small Business Grant Program. Following staff review of eligible contractors, it was determined that the San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund, an independent legal entity, nonprofit public benefit corporation, has both the ability and the capacity to execute this approval via the distribution of individual grants to qualifying businesses of no more than $10,000 each across both grant programs. And moreover, the San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund has been and is still allocating grant funds on behalf of San Mateo County and SMC Strong since the start of the pandemic. And they have demonstrated their ability to do so accurately and in a timely manner. So as such, staff feel that they are the best entity to execute the distribution of these funds. And to that end, staff recommend that City Council approve the attached allocation agreement with San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund for Small Business Assistance and allow City Manager to execute contracts in accordance with Resolution 21-158. And I am available to, yeah, provide any information desired by Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phipps. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Phipps, thank you again for your report. I'm very familiar with SMC Strong, and I'm glad we have a financial institution to move these monies around. My question is, can we have any specificity to local businesses within Daly City who applies? Rather than the gamut of anyone in San Mateo County?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. And yeah, the answer is yes. That has been explicitly written into this contract that has been approved by staff as well as San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund. All grant funds within this program, within this allocation, will only go to local, pre-qualified Daly City businesses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phipps. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. We have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Phipps. In regards to the Small Business Assistance Program, it's essential that we have this, and it's great that it's being implemented. One note I did recognize was that if funds weren't expended, that's what I noticed in the summary, that then it would be, I guess, sourced out to another program that would, you know, release the funding. Can you elaborate on that? Because I'd like to know further what that entails.
Yeah, certainly. That's a great question, Councilmember Manalo. Thank you very much. So the two programs that we will be allocating funds to have already been opened and closed at the county level. And the remaining applicants are only those applicants that have not been able to be funded through the first round of funding that was provided. So what we're doing with these monies is backfilling all of the other Daly City applicants that were not able to be funded in the first round. With that in mind, once we do go back following the approval, if that's Council's desire this evening, we will identify any applicants that are no longer eligible or perhaps don't have the same interest in receiving these funds that they used to have. And in the case that, you know, those numbers reduce, then we may have monies left over. With any monies that are left over, they will pass through to an additional grant program that SMC Strong has administered. One of the grant programs that we are looking at, that we believe we could use the spectacle funding, any unused funding, is the County Microfood Grant Program. And we anticipate that the amount of unfunded Daly City applicants would exceed any leftover revenues.
Got it. You don't anticipate any money left over, but if it does, it would go into the micro enterprise program, which in essence would go back to qualified city businesses.
Correct.
Wonderful. I think this is great that this is being implemented. It would be wonderful to have a report at the end in regards to, you know, what types of businesses were supported. And then, you know, were they restaurants? Were they small retail? Was it home-based businesses? I think capturing that is extremely important for us to also assess where our small businesses are in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Phipps, for the report. It's very exciting. Would you mind telling the people how they can find out more information? And how they can apply?
Sure. So I just want to reiterate that the grant programs that we are looking at this evening for allocation of funds have already opened and closed.
Okay.
But there is an active SMC Strong website. I believe it's, let me just verify it, but I believe it's www.smcstrong.com. And on that website, they have a list of all of their active grant programs, one of which I believe is a microfood grant program.
That'd be great, because, you know, everybody still needs money to get back on their feet. So appreciate that. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other comments or questions for my colleague, Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I have one last question. Mr. Phipps, I'm just wondering, I know we found an organization to be able to administer the program. What is the cost that we have as far as, like, you know, funding this entity to distribute these grants or funding? Yeah.
Yeah, so San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund has requested a nominal administrative compensation in the amount of $10,000, which will be deducted from the $830,000.
Wonderful. Thank you. That was my question. I wanted to make sure that majority of the funds did go to the businesses. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to move to approve item number nine.
Sounds good. There's a motion and a second by Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Moving on to item number 11. Adoption of a resolution to accept and appropriate the California State Library targeted state-funded grant for $2 million for the Ceremonti Library and Bay Shore Library projects.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Speaker Council. This item is the adoption of a resolution to accept and appropriate the California State Library targeted state-funded grants for $2 million for the Ceremone Library and Bay Shore Library projects. Back in the fall of 2021, staff identified two sites, the Ceremone Library and Bay Shore Library, to apply for the California State Library targeted state-funded grants. Staff worked closely with City Manager's Office and Assembly Member Phil Ting's office to submit projects to improve ADA access and energy efficiency upgrades at Ceremone Library as well as emergency backup power for Bay Shore Library. Daly City was approved for the full $2 million in grants. The project at Ceremone Library will include the installation of an elevator to allow ADA access to the first floor. And it will also do energy efficiency upgrades to the lighting system for the first and second floor of Ceremone Library. The Bay Shore Library consists of electrical upgrades and an emergency generator replacement to be able to provide backup power to the Bay Shore Library in the event of power outages caused by extreme weather. The total estimated cost of the projects are $2 million. If approved, $2 million will be appropriated to the Ceremone Library and Bay Shore Library projects. So in summary, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution to accept and appropriate the California State Library targeted state-funded grant for $2 million for the Ceremone Library and Bay Shore Library projects. That concludes my presentation, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Councilmember Justin Manalo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Chu, on your amazing work on this. You know, any resources in order to ensure that our, you know, libraries are enhanced, both and now two libraries, Ceremone Library and also Bay Shore. And so this is just amazing work on the staff's part. I just wanted to say, this is huge, you know, as we talk about budgets, as we talk about looking for resources. This is just amazing to see, because this is just not, you know, a small amount, right? Like, this is $2 million that will go to our much-needed support for our libraries, which serves our community. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Councilmember, I think, I believe you're muted.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finally, it's going to be ADA accessible. That is like a dream come true for Ceremone Library. Everybody kept thinking about it, you know, through the years, elevator, elevator, they're expensive. How are we going to get an elevator? Wanting an elevator, but it was always so expensive. So great work with you and your staff. Bay Shore got in on it. And can't wait to see that elevator go up and so that everyone can have an opportunity for our library, so that no one feels left out. Even though things were built a long time ago, making them accessible is just, it's such a beautiful thing. And then the Bay Shore gets to benefit as well. So thank you, Bravo. And our libraries are getting some love. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, I want to say, first of all, congratulate the staff. Throughout the years, we've always advised them, you know, go out there and look and see if we can get grants. And I have to commend staff, Mr. Chu, and the rest of all those involved, that you folks have not left anything unturned. And that's great. That's great news. And that's great. That's great news. And I'm sitting here and I'm looking at my PG&E bill, and I see a credit balance of over 300 dollars. I bring that up because we're talking about energy efficiency. I think we should seriously consider if there's any monies left over, because right now it's just an estimate. We should consider solar panels and maybe, you know, start moving toward harnessing that energy. I'm sure the mayor, being part of PCE, knows all about solar and what PCE does in buying solar farms contracts. So if there's any way possible, we've adopted reach codes. Consider, maybe we can get some solar panels up on the roofs, and I think that would be a good thing for our future in sustainability. Thank you so much again.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any other comments, questions? Great. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Being on, as a former Library Board trustee, I remember this is what that was one of the key issues was getting an ADA elevator. So I'm glad that we had the funding to do that now. So can I get a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, would you like to second?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Glad to be second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, so next, item number twelve, adoption of a resolution to accept and create the California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grant for 4 million for the Margate Park Improvements Project.
Yes, I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor. So this is also a an adoption of a resolution to accept and appropriate the California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grant for 4 million dollars for the Margate Park Improvement Project. So back in April of 2021, then-Mayor Manalo requested to Assembly Member Phil Ting's office for funding to improve Margate Park. Margate Park is currently a deactivated recreation facility that formerly contained tennis facilities as well as a walking path around the perimeter. In in fall of 2021, the City of Daly City applied for the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grant. The city was approved for the full amount of 4 million dollars from the State Department of Parks and Recreation. This project will install new equipment at the park. It'll install a walking and skate park facilities along with other miscellaneous improvements. This park was identified in the parks master plan to to be reestablished for the community in that area. So if if this is approved, 4 million dollars will be appropriated to the Margate Park Improvement Project. And staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution to accept and appropriate the State California Department of Parks and Recreation specified grant of 4 million dollars for the Margate Park Improvement Project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Justin Manala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Chu. I just want to say thank you to the staff on working on this and bringing this to fruition and also to Assembly Member Phil Ting, who represents us on the assembly side here in Daly City. One thing I wanted to note, and I I've shared this with City Manager Malby, is that if if there's any way to research ways to improve parks that is all accessible, such as the magicalbridge.org, it's a park in Palo Alto, you know, that supports all abilities, you know, I there are people that are are that have children, that have autism, and to be able to have areas in which they are all-inclusive, I think if there's any way to see if there's elements of magicalbridge.org, if that research could be done towards Margate Park since we have an opportunity on a 4.5-acre park to see what could be done to have all-accessible recreation spaces in our community. But a wonderful job well done, and thank you for your work on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Chu, I just want to thank former Mayor Justin Manala for getting this ball rolling, and thank you to Mr. Phil Ting for making this happen. Can I get a motion to approve this agenda item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Raven Ventura. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted.
Thank you.
I'm returning the favor. Thank you.
I know. Approving America, or item number thirteen, approving American Rescue Plan ARPA State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, SLFRF, Allocation Agreement for Immigrant Relief.
Thank you again, Mayor. The item before you this evening is an additional follow-up to your previous adoption of a budget plan for use of ARPA and SLFRF funds, Resolution 21-158. Regarding immigrant relief, council's adopted budget plan approved 820,000 dollars for that service. Following staff review of eligible subrecipients providing local immigrant relief services, it was determined that Mission Asset Fund, an independent legal entity and nonprofit public benefit corporation, has both the ability and capacity to execute this approval via the distribution of cash assistance to low and/or moderate-income immigrant households in City of Daly City of no more than 400 dollars each per month for up to 24 months. So a little background on Mission Asset Fund here. They have been operating in the Bay Area for 15 years and have been serving the Greater Bay Area since 2011. They have since expanded nationwide and are currently working with numerous organizations and nonprofits across the nation to support immigrant communities in reaching financial independence through the provision of loans, financial services, and direct cash assistance. So they've helped thousands of low-income immigrant families to transform barriers and opportunities, enabling them to build brighter futures. Mission Asset Fund is also a partner with San Mateo County Immigrant Relief Fund, which is a sub-entity within the California Immigrant Relief Fund. And the Immigrant Relief Fund provides financial support in the form of direct cash assistance to immigrant workers and families who have suffered financial hardship due to the pandemic and have been left out of federal COVID-19 relief programs. So these monies will go directly to support these programs for eligible families within the City of Daly City, which we hope will provide them with a much-needed safety net in these times of crisis. So to that end, yeah, staff are making the recommendation that City Council approve the attached allocation agreement with with Mission Asset Fund and allow City Manager to execute contracts in accordance with Resolution 21-158. I am available to provide any additional information, answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I just want to say thank you for identifying an organization that can serve the most, some of the most vulnerable communities in our in our communities. So with that, do I have a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
So first by Councilmember Justin Manala and a second by Vice Mayor Raven Ventura. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, moving forward, we go down to public hearings. Item number fifteen, approval benefit assessments for Linda Vista area for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And I'll hand it over to Kevin Furr and Richard Chu.
Yes, good evening. This item is the approval of the benefit assessments for the Linda Vista area. So it's for fiscal year 2022 and 23. The recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, approve the engineer's report, and approve the fiscal year 2022 and 23 property assessments for the assessment district. So the assessment district is subdivided into two drainage basins, Linda Vista and Bay Ridge. These subdivisions are required to detain on-site stormwater and access of the flow rate that existed before the land was developed. The Bay Ridge areas towards the west serve about 177 lots, and the area drains through a detention basin located near Alexis Circle. Improvements maintained in the area include the stormwater detention basins, storm drain pipe systems, janning walls, fences, lighted pathway on the way to Bay Shore Heights Park, and other minor facilities. This property is close to the public. In the Linda Vista area drainage area, it's towards the east and it serves a total of 176 lots. This area drains through a detention basin located to the west of Linda Vista Drive. And improvements here include stormwater detention basins, storm drain pipe systems, fencing pathways, landscaping, and other minor facilities. This area is typically open to the public for use as a passive park space, but due to the nearby development project, it's temporarily closed. These facilities are unique to the subdivisions that they serve, and they require special services in excess of normal city maintenance. Annual cost of maintaining and eventually replacing these facilities is equally assessed on the benefiting properties in each area. Parcels dedicated for public use are not assessed. A report to an engineer's report was filed with City Clerk on April 22, and it describes the services to be provided, their estimated costs, and the basis and schedule of proposed property assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. Maintenance staff systematically evaluates the benefit area. They do this on a quarterly basis to ensure the maintenance and repair of these facilities is appropriate. And examples of these evaluations include testing the path lighting, inspecting fences, looking at detention basins, and assessing vegetation while checking for supplies and looking for the presence of debris. Any corrective measures needed are noted and addressed. And so the proposed assessments for the upcoming fiscal year are the same as last last fiscal year, fiscal year, excuse me, which is the current fiscal year. And these would be 151.13 in the Linda Vista area and 100.46 per parcel in the Bay Ridge area. Staff advise the property owners of these proposed assessments and the availability of the report via mailing on April 22. The fiscal impact here would be to generate approximately 44,000 dollars, and these revenues would be used to fund the appropriate departments responsible for maintenance, as well as to contribute towards a facilities capital replacement fund. And they're collected by the county tax collector on regular property tax assessments. So in summary, we do recommend that the City Council conduct a public hearing, approve the report, as well as approve the benefit assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. And we're here to provide any additional information or answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Furr, thank you for your presentation and update. The question I have for you are is, are there any areas, unincorporated areas, in Daly City that would not be subject, or are they subject to the same assessment?
All of the properties in this assessment district are within our incorporated boundaries. There's no county parcels that are a part of this.
No county parcels?
No, unincorporated, sorry.
Unincorporated parcels. And these unincorporated parcels, do they benefit? Because it seems like the parcels in Daly City is taking the brunt of Linda Vista. And I I think that unincorporated parcels should also be considered.
Yeah, if I may clarify a part of the report that I think might answer this question is the area was defined because this area, about 177 lots on one side, 176 on the other. Those specifically benefit from the improvements that these assessments go towards maintaining. So any areas outside of these roughly 300-some-odd lots don't benefit from the improvements. And so that area has already been defined, and only those contributing to this receive a benefit from the stormwater facilities that are maintained.
Well, I think that's a good answer. So confirming, I'm familiar where the location is, Linda Vista. So someone who lives up in Southern Hills, would they be would they be subject to this assessment?
No, they would not. It's only the the three areas might be known as Linda Vista, Bay Ridge, and Bay Vista is also another area, but Southern Hills is not a part of this area.
Got you. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Can I open the public hearing?
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 15, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No hands raised near.
Thank you, Leilani. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
To make a motion to close.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve this item.
All right. We have a first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. We have a second, and a second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. We'd like to adopt a resolution by roll call, please, Miss City Clerk.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Okay, so motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Furr and Mr. Chu. Moving on to communications, item number 16, Use Permit UPR-05-22-015688, Extension of Existing Use Permit, Allowing Temporary New Auto Storage at 607 Carter Street.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Members of the City Council, this is a request by Sayufi Properties to obtain a permit extension of a permit that was granted five years ago for the storage of new automobiles at the previous Geneva Drive-In lot off of Carter Street. As the City Council may recall, back in 2017, council granted a an initial approval with some time extensions that were all granted, but the permit issued at that time placed a maximum five-year duration on that use permit. And so the applicants needed to apply for a new use permit essentially. And that is what they are before the City Council tonight to discuss. The use that's proposed would be the exact same use that's operated for the past five years, essentially the storage of new automobiles that are for sale in local dealerships in San Francisco and San Mateo Counties. The, as the staff report indicated, the city staff is in support of the request. There were several items discussed in the staff report at the time of the initial approval. There was some concern by the City Council that the applicant Sayufi would need to cooperate with land use planning that's occurring on this site and adjacent sites, including a city-owned housing finance agency-owned site to the north and or to the south, rather. And as part of that, the applicant has met with the Bay Shore Revitalization Committee in February of 20 of this year, 2022. Also, there was a preliminary conceptual application made for a battery storage, a green, bring energy storage use by Cormorant on the Sayufi property, and the city staff had indicated in its response to that pre-application conference letter. And the city staff had indicated in its response to that pre-application conference letter that it would support a rezoning of the site to industrial, potentially, only for the site that had the battery storage. And that the balance of the site would be, need to be rezoned to something like a residential multifamily. The city staff has discussed this with Sayofi Properties, and they have indicated that they are willing to engage in conversations with us on a mutually beneficial land use program. So with that, we, the city staff is in support of the requested five-year time extension. And that's what's requested, a five-year duration for this permit. And I believe Sayofi is in the meeting. Any of the city council members have any questions for them, as well as, of course, the city staff is available.
Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, so what I'm wondering about is why the need to go five years? I do understand there are, there have been discussions about Sayofi, you know, taking steps to put together a project. And I know about the battery storage facility concept, which is intriguing. But obviously, it hasn't come before the council. So I, I don't really have a position on whether or not that's something that the community would want or would accept. But I'm trying to understand why we have to go five years versus allowing the process of the development to continue versus what I see as, as if you, if you pass this five-year extension, you're building in another process of stalling the project from moving forward. Or at least you're, 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 there's no incentive to keep it moving forward. In fact, it's a disincentive now that they've got another five years to, to play with. So I mean, I think there have been steps that have been taken. And I applaud Sayofi for that because they do appear to be talking, and they're getting people together, and they're trying to plan for something. Whether or not it's accessible to the community, that's another discussion. But I'm not really sure that we need to give them five years to have as a cushion.
Perhaps Sayofi, Bill Viera from Sayofi, or anybody else? If you could answer the need for the exact five years, I mean, the city councils, can, the city council can do a 3-1-1. Essentially, that's what was done the last time, was an initial three-year term with the two one-year time extensions. The most efficient thing would be just a single five-year. But again, city council can issue the duration it would like.
Sure, I don't mind taking the question, and thank you very much. It's nice to see everyone this evening. Mayor, council members, thank you. Councilmember Buena Ventura, you know, hopefully, in the years that I've been before you, before the council, you trust that we're trying to get something done out there. I don't see a temporary CUP as a disincentive by any means to reaching a higher and better use for that land. The underlying value of that real estate far exceeds what we would receive on a temporary basis from, from any tenancy that we're looking at in this, for this use especially. So we're motivated, we've been motivated to try to figure out how to unlock this. You know, the story I've shared before, we're landlocked on all sides by properties that we don't control the timelines on, nor quite frankly, the direction of development or the desirability of the other parties to develop. We're trying to implement a first phase of, of a project out there, leaving the door open for collaborating with the city on, on the housing parcel. And we've made the commitment that we're going to try to match the land use and try to land plan what we would consider to be our residual property. If we're able to put this project together with the first phase, our second phase would connect and bolt on to the city's parcel and hopefully create a much better neighborhood and a neighborhood cluster for the housing parcel. So as we mentioned to staff, if you, in that application, if you would like us to zone in advance and to put that land use in place, we will do that. If you would ask us to hold off and to not put the land use in place and wait, we would do that as well. So we're trying to be as cooperative as possible and to leave the door open to whatever it is that takes place on the city's property. And so that we can, again, combine to, to reach a higher yield for both parcels. The thought behind the five-year, quite honestly, is it's been five years and we're still trying. You know, I started, as you guys know, on this project, trying to figure out a way to unlock the Cow Palace in 2005, and I'm still trying. So it just takes a long time, and with all the challenges on that real estate out there to, to get all the pieces to work together. It does not dissuade me in any way from trying, and will continue to try. The thought is, again, I wouldn't have to come back each and every year to, to re-present that we're still trying to figure this out and trying to work on it. If I can unlock this, we absolutely will without hesitation. So maybe an alternative would be if, if it resides with staff and the city attorney to just, you know, approve the extension as opposed to having to come back to council. That would be another way so I don't, you know, burden your time with this issue again. So that's the thought.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I mean, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I actually want you to come back.
You like me that much?
Well, well, so I want to see, I want to see progress. And, and it, it's not, I mean, I think it's necessary. I just don't, I don't think it's a burden on anyone to, and I think it's our responsibility to make sure this thing moves along. So having you come back, I think it's better for all of us because it will show the community that you are trying. It will show us that you're trying. And I just don't want a five-year gap in time to just assume everything's going to be okay. I want us to have our thumb on this thing and, you know, I just don't see why, I'm still not understanding the reason why you can't come back and keep, keep updating and keep presenting and keeping the, the wheels moving so we can get something done in the Bay Shore. Again, I have seen progress, meaning that I, I know of your, and I've seen your presentation on what you see as a viable alternative to that site. But, I mean, it just, nothing has moved other than a one presentation. And so I, I just need more, and I just can't see myself supporting five years of waiting and just not leaving it at that. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I did place the request for five years just in my calendar-ing of time, the way I kind of see the processes occurring. To go through the approval processes as we, as we have them in the city today, it's going to be at least a 36-month time period before, you know, if we, if we could expedite this thing, it'd be at least 36 months. So I put in two years just because I believe that I'll continue to work on this, and it won't be as expeditious as I would, so I would always hope it would be. But if you're amenable to 36 months, I just, I'd come back and we can do it on an annual basis after that. If that's a reasonable alternative for you.
Well, I mean, I'm not the sole decider here, so I'd like to hear what my other colleagues is, I think.
I'd like to open it up to my fellow colleagues. We have Councilmember Jocelyn Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Vera. You know, I, I, I have been on council for quite some time now, and I do remember this conversation happening where it was, I think, you know, an opportunity to have this conditional use permit. And it was a discussion on, you know, seeing whether or not we can see progress along the way. And I've heard there's progress. I heard that you, you know, you're trying to find ways to develop that land. And so I think for me, it's also important to see the progress along the way. I'm, I hear that you're working with city staff in regards to the affordable housing site we have adjacent to you, so that's great to hear. But I think for the overall, I think, for a community development aspect and perspective, I would be in agreement with having something shorter than five years in, in that respect. So that's kind of where, where I'm at. I know that you've looked at different possibilities, but I can't believe that's been five years already. So I mean, as time flew, you know, and I remember, I remember having been in this situation again. And so hoping that the next years ahead of us will be different. That's, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jocelyn Manalo, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vera. I remember Sayofi even, I've been on your last time. But with the extension of that, I have to be in agreement that five years, definitely, like the vice mayor said, and then, you know, you can always come back to us, and that's what we're here for. We want to work with people. You've already made steps, right? It's about building relationships. And then you know how we feel about our Bay Shore and, and making sure that they're okay. And the battery thing is a separate issue if I'm, because I have some concerns or questions about that as we move forward. But I have to agree that we, less than five years, and that's what we're here for. And I agree with the vice mayor and my colleague, Councilmember Manalo, on that aspect. But I do applaud you for moving steps, and I know it's not easy. And the COVID really set things back for a lot of different things for everybody. So we do recognize those facts, and my colleagues are very cognizant of those things because of, at the end, we know what the goal is, and we see your movement, and we applaud you for the movement, but at this time, five years. I'm not in favor of five years, but thank you. But look forward to working as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Amber Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vera, for being here. I know it's been a long process. And if I can recall, when you, excuse me, last came, we specifically reduced the term because we wanted to see movement. And a recommendation was made for three years. And quite honestly, I'm not even comfortable with three years. I think tomorrow is promised to no one, and we need to see an update. We need to move along. The Bay Shore area is unique in a sense. I've heard the term food desert. And, you know, we even discussed possibility of a shopping, retail on the bottom and units up on top. I think we need to get moving and do something out there. I'm, I'm really concerned, and we need, we need to keep the process moving. I like the idea of battery storage, but that could be placed somewhere maybe along on the property. I think we can come to a happy medium, just as long something is going on. And to wait five years before this comes back before council again with the premise, well, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this. I, I'm not for it. So just my comments, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I guess moving forward, is there like something that people, my colleagues want to propose? I hear this general, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'd like to cut it in half, so, I mean, two years or two and a half at the most. But I don't know if we should just do a round number, maybe make it two. But that's around the ballpark, I'm thinking. So.
I would support the vice mayor's proposal as well. I, I'm inclined to go two years to ensure that it's a friendly amendment that at least this will make the process move along.
All right, so I make a motion to do two years.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll second.
All right.
May, may, I'm sorry, may I ask for just a clarification? Are you, is it, is everybody okay with the, perhaps as we had done before with the one-year renewals? If I come before you again?
So, so you're saying that we were going to approve it for two years, but after one year, you want to come back to see if we'd renew?
Well, the, the last time, we had agreed to five-year maximum term. But I would come back on an annual basis after this initial period. So thinking if that's, if that's reasonable to do again, if you're agreeable to the 24 months, and then I would have three extensions that I would come back before you to grant in, in the same way we had done the prior CUP.
Michael, what do you think about that?
Sounds very reasonable to me. Okay. But what it does is, yes, it does allow the council the discretion that it needs and also provides flexibility to the applicant without the need to re-advertise every, every year.
Okay.
If I can make a recommendation, I, what I'm hearing is, if we approve the two-year, then by year number three, we would get an update. Why not go for the two years? And within the two years, you provide us an update on an annual basis?
I'm, I'm amenable to talking at any point with anyone about anything. So I'm, I'd love to dialogue. If anybody has any questions along the way about the process, where we are, what the challenges are. So I, and we've been talking with staff about where we are in the various processes as well. So I'm thinking we're keeping everybody informed. But if there's another way to communicate, I'm certainly open to, everybody knows me, knows I love to talk. So just, I'd love to chat.
No, I mean, I think what's important for me, and I think for the community, is that, that you talk to the council at a public meeting so that the people in the Bay Shore can hear from you what's going on, and they can have a sense of what, what progress we're making. That's what, that's what's more important, I think.
I certainly would come back. If you guys are okay with the 24 months, I'll come back after the 12 months and give you an update as well, certainly.
That's good. All right.
May I just ask a quick question? Michael, this doesn't have anything to do with the battery storage, correct?
The, the current proposal is the storage of new automobiles. That's what this use permit covers. It does not permit battery storage in any.
That's all, and that's all I had to ask. But I agree with Vice Mayor and Councilmember, yes. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, I saw you put your hand up and put your hand down. Would you like to chime in, or are we okay?
I was just going to say, on the two-year, if we approve it for two years, we'll be, based on the progress we've made so far, we'd be pretty far into reviewing a development application if we stay on pace. So I think there'll be some knowledge of how far they are. We've had several technical meetings. I think one of the biggest issues is considering the routing for the undergrounding of the electrical lines. So, so we've had some pretty detailed technical meetings. Two years from now, we will know where this is going, for sure.
Good.
Okay. So I believe, was there a motion for, I believe there was a motion and a second with an amendment of like a two-year, and then revisiting annually after that? So it's a two-years, 1-1-1?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it's a two-year approval right now. However, that does not preclude from Sayofi coming back after one year instead of waiting three years to hear something. They can come back before council anytime, but at least. Something. They can come back before council anytime, but at least we would like to come, have them come back on an annual basis within the two-year period.
Got you. Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Okay, so that's what we have as, as an amendment. And we have a first and a second. So the city clerk, if you can do roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vera.
Appreciate it and look forward to seeing everyone soon.
Great. Thank you. Okay. My notes. Okay. Item number 17, mixed-use building at 7310 Mission Street. Use permit UPR dash zero four dash twenty-two dash one five six five zero and design review DR dash zero four dash twenty-two dash one five six five one.
Planner on this is Brian Paland. Brian, are you there?
He's muted.
There we go. Now I'm not muted. Sorry. And now my video is on, I think. You guys can hear me?
I could hear you.
I don't know why you can't see me. I just turned video on, but I don't see myself. Oh, well. So good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The next project before you this evening is a renewal of the previously approved Mission Street mixed-use at 7310 Mission Street. The project was originally approved by the city council on June 8th, 2020. The applicant is requesting a time extension because building permits have not been issued within one year of approval as required by the conditions of approval. The renewal application was reviewed by the planning commission on May 3rd, 2022. I have a presentation if I can share my screen. Is the screen share working? It says you are screen sharing. Can, can, can folks see the?
Yeah, we could see it.
Okay, let me go back to the beginning. Sorry about that. Okay. The project site is located on the west side of Mission between Vale Street and West Market Street. One parcel south of the corner parcel at Vale and Mission. In this existing site photo, you can see the single-story dental office building and the auto sales lot, which currently occupies both corner parcels. The proposed mixed-use building would be located between the office building and the auto sales lot, which would continue to operate on the cornermost parcel. The proposed mixed-use building would contain a 620-square-foot retail or office space, lobby and 13 parking stalls on the ground floor. The second floor would provide three studios and two, two-bedroom residential apartments. Additionally, a 465-square-foot office space would be associated with a ground-floor commercial tenant. The third and fourth floors would contain three studios and three two-bedroom residential apartments. The first floor plan indicates the commercial space located at the front elevation, the lobby and the parking area. The floor plans for the second through fourth floors indicate the residential apartments and the common open space roof deck. The building elevations show the proposed four-story building with cementitious panel siding, providing smooth textured and horizontal panels in charcoal and sand colors. Wall articulation would reduce the massing. Windows and doors on the ground floor would be metal-framed. Staff is recommending a condition of approval that the applicant explore, providing additional dimension to the upper-story walls at the Mission Street facade. The north and west elevations are shown here. Here are perspective drawings as viewed from Mission and Vale Streets. The 11 required residential parking spaces would be provided via mechanical stackers, as shown in this slide. Two additional standard stalls are provided on the ground floor for the retail slash office use. As previously mentioned, the building will be clad in cementitious paneling, panel siding with varying textures and colors. Wall articulation will be provided to reduce the appearance of overall massing. Sloped metal roofs will transition to the adjacent buildings. The front elevation has been designed with a void above the driveway to provide relief from Mission Street and to emphasize the building entry. This project is categorically exempt from CEQA guidelines per section 15332 in fill development. Staff recommend that the planning, that the city council take the following actions. Adopt the findings as outlined herein and affirm the environmental assessment. And approve use permit UPR 42215650 and design review 4221651. And that's the end of my presentation. And we also have the applicant available. If you have any additional questions that I'm, that he may be able to answer that I may not be.
Thank you, Mr. Paland. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Paland, for your presentation. I have a few questions if I may. We are talking about 17 units. Is that correct?
I believe that seems, that seems like, hold on, let me, let me check.
This is a point of clarification to the city council. This is a previously approved project at this location. The applicant barely missed, there was a piece of state law that allowed for automatic time extensions due to COVID. And this project was just outside the parameters of that. And so they had to, and I think COVID was a factor in why the project didn't get built. They had, they had to reapply and pay all the fees again, just like it was a new use permit. But this is a, a project, just to, just to reiterate, this is a previously approved project. And it's, it's, it's sort of a renewal, if you will.
And also to answer your, answer your question. Councilman Sylvester, yes, 17 units is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lockhausen, for your clarification. Actually, that was going to be my next question. And the next question is, this is pertaining to a request for an extension. So I have that. Now, I can see from the documentation that due to density bonus, they received approval for 20% reduction in parking. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And out of the 11 spaces that's going to be available, I see that you've indicated two of those spaces would be for commercial parking, for the commercial tenant.
There would, close, there would be 13 total available parking spaces. 11, 11 of which would be mechanical parking, that would be for the residential tenants and two of the 13 would be the, on the ground floor and available for the commercial tenant.
Okay, so without the 20% reduction, how many parking spots would have to be made available for this without the 20% reduction for 17 units?
Well, let's see. Two-bedroom units require two spaces each. So four for the two, two-bedroom units. Then there, that's on the second floor. On the third and fourth floors, they would each have three two-bedroom units. So that would be six and six. And for 16, 16 and two spaces for the commercial tenant.
So the studios is not taken into account here?
I'm sorry, the studios would need 1.1.5 spaces.
So that's a total of how many spaces if we don't count the 20% reduction?
I, I would need, I would need to calculate that out. I, I don't, I, I calculated that out when we first reviewed this project. When the staff first reviewed this project, but I don't have those numbers in front of me at the moment.
Okay, thank you so much. In absence of these numbers, because I think it would be more than 17 parking spots that would be needed. And if you have seen Mission Street, it's already congested as it is for folks parking on the street. And I just can't see how this would be feasible. What I'm feeling is I would need the applicant to come back with a better parking management plan instead of on-street parking, which is probably going to happen. So just my thoughts. Thank you so much. I have no further questions.
Councilmember, we can get you those numbers real quick.
If I may, the staff report indicates this is subject to Assembly Bill 744, which would restrict the city from requiring more than a half a parking space per bedroom.
Right.
And there's a total of 25 bedrooms.
Okay, so with those, go ahead.
So, so there's a state preemption that would prohibit us from requiring more than 12.5 spaces.
Oh, well, I'm getting 12.5 spaces, but due to this preempt, preemptive legislation, how much, does it come out to 12.5 or does it come out to 17? Because I find it very difficult for studio units, especially not to have any parking spots available to them, even though because of the 20% reduction. I, I just need to know the numbers and.
It's a steeper reduction than that. 25, 25 would be the normal number required and it's 12.5 required after the state preemption. So the city of Daly City doesn't really have a choice but to take this parking number because again, it's, it's a piece of legislation that was adopted by the state. If you're close to Bart and you provide affordability levels as this project has, there is a pretty steep parking reduction. And that's the reason that it was again approved back in, I believe it was 2017. And same, same exact parking was approved at that time that's proposed tonight. And the city's approved other projects that similar parking reductions that we should mention. This isn't the only one. It was a project approved on Sullivan Avenue with the same parking reduction.
I appreciate that. And I, I think the Eastmore property, we've approved a decrease, but it's clearly seen that it's TOD. On Mission Street, whether we say SAM Trans is considered as TOD aspect to qualify for the 20% reduction. I'm having some difficulty here and I, I need help in understanding it. What I'm going on is Mission Street right now and the congestion and how difficult it is to park. And with 17 units, I'm sure each one of those units will probably have one car. And I think we're going to have a problem here on the congestion. So it's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. When you were going back through the Michael, I mean, Brian, so thank you, Mr. Paland. When you were going through the mechanical parking?
Yes.
How many is on the mechanical?
11.
11 is on the mechanical?
Yes, I, I, so they're, they're gonna have, I, I two, three stackers and one, two stackers. So that adds up to 11.
11. So there's probably not any more room to put anymore, right?
No.
The way is, okay. But I appreciate them putting the stackers for sure. Right? A lot more buildings are using those.
I think.
That's my question for now. Thank you.
We will see more projects using stackers.
Right.
I don't know if any of the council members have had a chance to take a look at the Jefferson Union High School District staff housing project. But there's, there's a really neat shed that has exactly this puzzle lift system in it. And just because of the land value that we're seeing in Daly City, we're going to see a lot more of these mechanized forms of parking meet the city's parking requirement.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to both of you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments, questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the presentation from the staff and understanding kind of the parking requirements that the state has passed on a state level, you know, I have no reservations in approving this moving forward. So I just wanted to state, state that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And any other question, comments? Okay. Can we have Ms. City Clerk to adopt the resolution by roll call, please?
Can we open it up to public hearing if there's any comments?
Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you so much for the reminder, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Let's open up the motion to open up the public hearing. All right, who have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 17, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Looks like we have one hand raised. Nick?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I just want to comment. It's good to see that you have some new developments being built in Daly City. I did find it interesting. Just noting the parking requirements and improving, you know, I guess, or building housing in any city is consideration. That said, with consideration of affordable housing and just understanding where we are as a city, I did hear they mentioned also the Jefferson Union High School District worked. the Jefferson Union High School District workforce housing, the faculty and staff housing and the parking availability. I want to note that, one, I appreciate the city encouraging the district to repave and rebuild the parking lot, which was dangerous and full of potholes and other cracks in front of the district office. In addition, I want to also just echo concerns that are ongoing around the proposed precise plan for the development of a thousand additional units of housing in ceremony and the concerns I just heard from the city council around parking congestion to to can be concerned about seventeen units is one thing. To be concerned about one thousand units on scale is much greater. And so I want to urge, of course, reconsideration and continued consideration of scaling down that project and including more community benefits and the kind of things we talk about with all of our projects here in Daly City to make sure that anything being built here is a benefit to the community and not just a few, but those of our residents who are most vulnerable need the more services from our public services. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more hands raised.
Thank you, Leilani. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Glenn, so best a motion to close.
First, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call, please?
Motion to adopt resolution.
Second.
First by Councilmember Manalo and the second by Vice Mayor Ray Ventura. Ms. City Clerk, if you can please conduct a roll call vote.
Mr. Point Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, no.
Dr. Ron?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so motion is approved. Thank you, everybody. Moving down to ordinance ordinances, item number eighteen, second reading ordinance one, four, five, eight, adding chapter nine point five six to the Daly City Municipal Code. Subject: Police Acquisition and Use of Military Equipment. We have Ms. Kelly Scott Asha.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This item came up for introduction and first read at the last regularly scheduled meeting and it is up for adoption tonight. And it's an ordinance regarding police acquisition and use of military equipment and adopting a policy as well. Available if you have any questions. It's just for be adopted this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you, Kelly. And thank you. Thank you for being being here. Just a reminder to colleagues here in the meeting tonight, this resolution pertains to the use or the acquisition of military equipment. But that does not give carte blanche to the police department to say we are going to acquire this. Any sort of military equipment has to come before this council and it has to be approved, which I would assume information would be given as to how the the items will be used and what its intended purposes are. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Sylvester. Thank you. And just point of clarification, it's an it's an ordinance that will be codified in our municipal code and it will require council approval ongoing for the future acquisition of any military and use of equipment. And it also adopts a policy as well that they will abide by. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. I have no further questions.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Thank you for the clarification clarification, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Can we open up to public hearing? I know there was some public comments. So motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number eighteen, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Looks like we have two hands raised. You will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity may result in the speaker being muted immediately. And it looks like we have a total of three hands. Last called speaker will be Glenn. Nick, you're first to speak.
Hello. First, in the spirit of the movement that brought this state law and California State Law AB four eighty-one, our city should be absolutely meeting the minimum requirement of compliance, providing transparency with an inventory of any remaining military equipment required by local police departments. And our city should pass a resolution banning any future use and acquisition of any military equipment. There have been efforts at federal, state, and local levels to curb and de-escalate the use of military equipment and tactics on the streets of our cities. A recent report by the ACLU has echoed and led this call for demilitarization. In response to the uptick in hate crimes and gun violence, we should be emphasizing the lessons we've learned from before and throughout the pandemic and the waves of ongoing public protests and public policy moving to demilitarize our police departments, reimagine public safety and shift our attention and budget resources to social services, mental health, and education. If we are being intentional in reducing violence in our communities, we should immediately pass a resolution to ban use and acquisition of military equipment and step with AB four eighty-one tonight and lead S. San Mateo County forward as other cities and counties across the San Francisco Bay Area have already done. A sample resolution can be seen in Antioch's actions last year and the resolution they passed. That resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Antioch City Council is undertaking a police reform initiative and whereas the city council values community safety and seeks to promote and support the work of its public safety employees in a manner that builds community trust and whereas the governing body is responsible for periodically examining the alignment of the organization's mission and policies to evaluate the effectiveness of the agency's overall service to the public and it continues on to very end to say now therefore be resolved that the city council in the city of Antioch does hereby approve banning the city's future procurement of surplus military equipment by transfer or acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a caller. Please press star six to unmute.
Hello, good evening. It's the public. Hey, I think I we had sent you over a couple of emails about this. I I really want to understand, we really want to understand in what circumstances this equipment is needed. We really want to understand and how many times a either a DC PD officer, SWAT officer had to brandish or or draw their gun or taser and I think yeah, I mean, looking at the I'm looking at the DC PD Twitter and the and the plotters and everything else and I'm going, where would this be needed? Where in what circumstances would this be needed? And is it more of a show of force or is it, does it make individuals feel like they have maybe a upper edge over others? And I'm trying to really understand how to quantify a circumstance where military equipment or something on that list that was actually on the document or the ordinance would would really come into play. I mean, Daly City, as mentioned, it's a hundred and eleven years old and there's one fallen officer. I mean, that's a, you know, that's a testament to the community. So just really want to understand and I didn't hear anything back and we had sent off that email. We we just, we really want to understand why so much force would be needed in a really a family community. So anyway, keep your thought. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. And we have last called speaker Glenn.
Hi, I don't even understand how militarizing the police helps anything. I'm sorry, but what are we at war with in Daly City that necessitates this or anywhere in this country, really? I don't know about any of you, but I certainly do not want my heart and money militarizing a force that seems keen on criminalizing the most vulnerable communities. Y'all can't sit there and applaud over the good things that are happening for the most negatively impacted communities and then reinforce the agents that perpetuate and exist and exacerbate their issues to begin with. With military-grade equipment, what kind of sense does that make? So no, no to military equipment for killer cops, justice for Roger Allen.
Thank you for your comments. We have no additional hands.
Thank you, Leilani. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Vice Mayor Ray Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of questions about this ordinance. If, I I don't know who's going to address this, maybe you, Kelly. As the as the ordinance stands, if we don't pass the ordinance, am I correct in understanding that Daly City Police could still, under exigent circumstances, procure the use of this military equipment without council approval? So if we didn't pass anything like this ordinance, the process of procuring military equipment for emergency purposes is still available. Is that right?
I understand is that that you need to have this ordinance in order to move forward, but I will defer to interim Chief Tritinson on that matter. Under exigent circumstances, perhaps you will be able to, Captain, I mean, Chief.
Yeah, because i- in reading i- in reading the ordinance, it does say that I'll get I'll get the.
Yeah, yes, you're correct. You're correct, Councilmember. It does say that about exigent circumstances.
So.
Not require counsel, but I believe that would be current. That's how current law is now as as it stands.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then so this and so just to understand, so this or this ordinance is basically saying that if the police want to use military equipment, they have, they they could use it under exigent circumstances and they don't need to go through us. That's number one. But number two, if it's not exigent circumstances, they could use it if they go through us. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. That is correct. They acquire it. That would be, yeah, acquire it and use it.
Okay.
And the come with the council.
Okay, so so some of the things that I'm a little bit disturbed at
take this from you.
Is, for example, there is a provision in this ordinance that allows for the use of aircraft. I I just, I don't find using aircraft against civilians in our city to ever be a necessary thing. And so I'm not.
Right. I I believe that this is a model ordinance that was adopted in accordance with the state law. It doesn't require the police department to use aircraft. I'll let the chief speak to the actual operational use of it. But in order to move forward with any kind of acquisition or use of military equipment, this ordinance does need to be in place by a certain deadline.
Yeah, and I I guess that's what I'm wondering is why, again, I'm all about public safety and making sure our people are safe, but I'm not, I'm I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable with knowing that the the idea of using military equipment against our our people, our civilian population. And and then so that that leads to my other question, which is if we were ever in a state where we needed military assistance, couldn't we not just ask for the National Guard or something rather than having to have our own of military equipment?
I believe that is correct, but I'll let the captain speak to the operational aspects of this ordinance.
Yeah, Kelly, I'll go ahead and jump in for a minute. Sorry. So the the ordinance and the policy provides an opportunity for council to have oversight and what the department uses for equipment that was defined through legislation as military equipment. As was previously mentioned in the staff report, the previous meeting, the police department does not have specific equipment that's identified as used specifically for military purposes, nor do we utilize any surplus military equipment, which are through some of the ten thirty-three surplus programs. All of the equipment that we have has been designated as military equipment under the legislation is relatively standard through the law enforcement community. There is actually another law enforcement agency that did a survey of all the associated equipment and all of the equipment that we have is also being utilized by all the other agencies in the Greater Northern Bay Area or Northern California of agencies of our size. The the equipment in and of itself is intended to create a safer environment for officers and for the community in critical incidents. I think it's important to note that of all of the items that were listed in our equipment report, which was published on the website, there's only three items that are available to patrol officers on a daily basis. Everything else is only available to special units or specially trained and require additional oversight and authority to use that equipment. The three items that are available to patrol officers are the patrol rifles, which are deployed in every patrol car. The less lethal beanbag shotguns, which is a less lethal item that reduces the potential need for lethal force. And then the forty millimeter exact impact round, which is like a foam, less lethal round as well. That less lethal round is only available through the supervisor's vehicle. Three of those. Really, there's only two that are accessible to patrol. One is also additionally accessible through supervisor arrival and approval. And then everything else in this list is specifically for critical incidents through specialized and trained units. So the adoption of this ordinance, which creates the adoption of our policy, which is required by state law, just gives council the ability to acknowledge and approve any future use and or for us to acquire any additional equipment that's outlined specifically in that policy. What was the other associated question you had?
So, yeah, I was asking about the National Guard and when and how that comes into play and couldn't that, if if that kind of military assistance is needed, isn't that something that we can just draw from rather than having the equipment ourselves?
Is there a specific type of equipment that you're referring to that you would feel that the National Guard, I don't know how the deployment of National Guard works, but.
Well, I'm I I mean, I'm not an expert in in the military equipment, but I mean, when I see things like aircraft giving you authorization to use aircraft, I mean, that's that's just beyond the 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 realm of what I think we as a city are doing. And then I I look at some of the caliber weapons and it it just, it strikes me as, you know, stuff, stuff about going to war. And I don't think that that's what we're about here in Daly City.
So I mean, I think just to to kind of answer the the aircraft, and I think if I'm looking at it correctly, the unmanned aircraft systems, which would be considered drones. Drones are widely used in law enforcement and they create an opportunity for de-escalation, safe separation from violent situations. It takes officers out of harm's way by having to put them on an inner perimeter and allow a drone to do as such. And it's one of those things that we currently do not employ drones for for tactical operations. We do have two drones, which have been approved for the purposes of accident reconstruction. So if we have an accident scene, we can put a drone up. It's got special software that basically takes a picture and overlays multiple pictures so we can recreate an accident scene. But we do not have any that we actually use for operational purposes. That being said, almost every jurisdiction surrounding our our city does deploy drones successfully for purposes of safe apprehension. And I think there's been a lot of successful stories from a lot of local agencies that have utilized drones for success for successful and safe apprehensions and operations, which have, again, resulted in a safer environment for the community. The subject being investigated or apprehended and the officers as well. So I I as far as drones or or aircraft, it's not referring to any kind of aircraft that I'm aware of outside of just an unmanned. just an unmanned aerial system or a drone.
Well, I mean, in, in the ordinance itself, it talks about unmanned. And, and, and so I'm assuming that, that, that specifically refers to drones that, because it actually says unmanned remotely piloted powered aerial or ground vehicles. So I, I, I accept that, that that's talking about drones, but further down the ordinance, it does talk separately and uses the word aircraft. And so that's why it's just sort of startled me when I saw things like that, but I, I appreciate your clarification because you, you, when you made it clear that you're really talking about only three type of weapons, I, I, I'm feeling much better about that kind of definition rather than thinking that all kinds of military equipment will be used in the city of Daly City, so thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I think it's important that there are in the definitions and the definitions in the ordinance were directly from the legislation, eighty four eighty-one code, and there are sixteen listed. Of those sixteen, we only have a handful. And yes, we, if, if it was listed in the ordinance or the legislation and it was not listed in our equipment policy that was actually on the, on the website and presented, attached to the, the previous staff report. If it wasn't included in anything that we currently have and we cannot use anything that you saw on that list, i.e., it does say weaponized aircraft, without your approval. So I would have to come before council requesting their acquisition or use of that. I think it is important to recognize in the exigency aspect of the ordinance and in the policy, that refers to mass critical incidents where there's a potential need for mutual aid assistance and agencies not within Daly City. So without getting into specifics, we've had active shooter situations, not only in Daly City, but in other, other locations on the San Mateo County Peninsula, where agencies from San Francisco East Bay, the San Francisco Airport, and all of San Mateo County responded to try and support that local jurisdiction through mutual aid. And as a result, I can't necessarily sure that San Francisco or a local jurisdiction that would come to support us around one of our borders doesn't have something listed in the ordinance or in the legislation that I may not have told you about that I have. So that's the point of the exigency. So if something is utilized in your city, though, it's required upon myself to come before council within thirty days and make you aware that something was utilized. I do know that all of the agencies surrounding Daly City that have already gone through this ordinance process as well do not have anything outside of the realm of what we have listed in our equipment policy as well.
Okay. So in, in looking at item number six, where it says weaponized aircraft, what weaponized aircraft do you envision?
That's a great question, because I have no clue what law enforcement agency or some any kind of law enforcement agency would have a weaponized aircraft.
Yeah.
That refers to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I, it struck me kind of. So thank, thank you, Chief Christensen, I appreciate your, your comments.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Acting Chief Christensen, I have a couple of questions if I may for you. And matter of fact, you've already answered them partially. The first one I would like to bring up is something called mutual aid. If Daly City was to avail themselves, should the situation arise, and I don't think it will arise, when you, what sort of, or what agencies do you obtain, you know, without the governor, governor calling in the National Guard? What agencies would provide mutual aid to Daly City? Is there a MOU of some sort?
There's not necessarily an MOU or any mutual aid request that we would have would go through County Communications, which is our dispatch services. From there, they would most likely, depending on the circumstance, broadcast out to, depending on what our request is, if we can either ask for just North County, North and Central County, or all of San Mateo Counties. Typically, our mutual aid response is going to come from San Mateo County for most critical incidents. You know, you, you look back several years to the pipeline explosion in San Bruno. That was a mass critical incident with substantial mutual aid response. Well, out of that response, because of the, you know, what people thought it may have been, which was a downed aircraft, they reach out to the San Francisco Airport and all sorts of other jurisdictions got involved. So typically, we're not going to see San Francisco or any other agency outside of San Mateo County unless it's specifically requested for their known specialty services.
Thank you. In the area of critical incidents where Daly City had to call in mutual aid, say for instance, a hostage situation where you have an active shooter, can you define, or in your request for mutual aid, can you tell the responding agencies not to bring in specific equipment?
Sure. Typically, mutual aid requests, especially with an active shooter, are kind of an immediate request and not one that staff on site has the ability to necessarily manage at the onset. Now, typically, mutually, when it does respond, is required to check in with the incident command post, which will be created for any type of situation like that. And from there, we will be able to control, be aware of what equipment they do have outside of standard policing equipment that we may have a concern with. So if somebody came in and had something that, you know, raised a concern for us, they can't necessarily deploy it on our critical incident without our incident or tactical commander approval.
Excellent. So subsequently, in my case of active shooter, and you have some potential victims who need to be extracted from the area, would you preclude the use of an armored vehicle?
I, I mean, I'm sure there are circumstances that, you know, I would want to clarify depending on what the capabilities of armored vehicle are, but if it's a standard police style armored vehicle for the purposes of rescuing individuals, then yes, I would allow something like that in order for them to bring emergency medical services or law enforcement officers to the scene safely where they can respond.
Excellent. That was, that was my point, because I'm trying to determine circumstances as to when a piece of military equipment is being used. There's nothing to preclude Daly City from buying its own armored vehicles, is that correct? Rather than get it from the military?
Correct. We do have access to an armored vehicle ourselves, and we do have access to several of them throughout the county that are owned by other jurisdictions as well locally.
Thank you very much. My next pertains to milit- weaponized aircraft. And I would be completely opposed to that. And I would definitely favor the use of drones to obtain intelligence, especially in what you made mention about accident reconstruction. What I wanted to bring up is do your SWAT officers utilize any military weapons?
As defined per the legislation, sure. As defined through what would be interpreted through actual military equipment itself, designed specifically for the military only, I don't believe so outside of a patrol rifle.
And so subsequently, and which is, this is not on your list, you would not want approval from this council for a specialized weapon that comes from the military, say AR fifteen or a forty caliber rifle. You would not request that?
So we do have AR Colt fifteen platforms purchased for law enforcement by law enforcement vendors, but we do not have any patrol style rifles that come from the military. Many, many years ago, there was something called the ten thirty-three program, where the military surplus equipment that was either unused or at end of life was given to law enforcement agencies for budget reasons and all these other things. We had stuff years and years and years and years ago. All of that has since been turned in, destroyed. So we do not, and nor would we come back asking for military surplus equipment.
Thank you very much. One last piece of equipment, which I haven't heard about yet. Take for instance, a critical incident where you have a bomb threat or, or a explosive device that was alleged to be an explosive device. And I'm taking to your account keeping the public and the officers out of harms way. Would you see this as a good example to deploy the use of a robot in a sense to try to disarm the, the device?
So, yes. We, so our agency specifically doesn't have the training skills capable to manage those types of environments. The only agency that does in San Mateo County is the San Mateo County Bomb Squad through the Sheriff's Office. So we would contact them for mutual aid request, which we do on a, you know, halfway frequent basis anytime there's a suspicious device. We have a robot ourselves that's utilized by our SWAT team, but it's really a remote control car, basically, with a camera and a microphone on it, that we've had actually very little test with over the template that we've had. It's a resource that's available, but nothing that we utilize on a regular basis.
Okay, so given that circumstances where one agency has this particular type of equipment, and if it became available through the military rather than the city having to purchase, would you consider acquiring the unit if it's approved by council and then effect the necessary training for your officers to in the use of this equipment?
For the purposes of, of suspicious devices?
If, if, if a robot unit became available through the military for acquisition, and then it goes before the council and we say, hey, that sounds like a good idea, you would probably move forward to obtaining the equipment. But as you made mention earlier, you can think of one agency that has this equipment, and if you call them mutual aid, that agency has trained officers to operate such equipment. So if Daly City had the opportunity to obtain this military militarized piece of equipment, would you take steps to have your officers trained in the appropriate use of this equipment?
It's definitely something my staff and I would evaluate for cost effectiveness and, and reasonable resource to support the community. I do know that, you know, the, the bomb squad technicians go through an extensive amount of training and they're full-time bomb squad officers that are not part-time because the level of training that they have to go through. But yes, if something was available and we thought that there was going to be a benefit to the organization and the community, I would consider bringing it to council to discuss for potential acquisition.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any comments, questions from my fellow colleagues? I do want to acknowledge some of our public speakers, and I do believe that we shouldn't be using militarized weapons on our potential threats to our, to our city. I think it's getting to a point where we don't need type of warfare weapons to control or monitor our residents. And so this is like a hard one, because I do also see the potential for, you know, we get council approval for approving, purchasing of these militarized equipment, but I don't see the whole use for it. There's examples such as in Ferguson, when they brought out military forms of weapons to control protests, and I don't think that was necessary. But I do, I do see the, the logic of having city council, having the agency to have that. I just hope that future council members have the sensibilities, if this does pass, to really think critically about why we should be arming our police with military weapons. Are there any other comments or questions? Vice Mayor Raven Tor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I share your concern deeply. But however, I, I need to maybe get some more clarification from, from Kelly. If we don't pass this ordinance, does that essentially mean we have no policy on what we will do for military equipment?
And it's correct, and the council would have less control over it moving forward.
So that's my, my, that's my struggle, is that I do think we need a policy. And by having a policy that gives us the authority to reject or accept whatever is proposed by the chief later down the road, and God forbid, hopefully we'll never need to do it. And hopefully, we all, we will have the wisdom that you think we should have if that should ever come to fruition. So as much as I'm as equally hesitant as you are, Mr. Mayor, I, I think a policy is, is needed and at least we have some control and authority. That, that, that's my comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Acting Chief Christensen.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think it's important to, to understand that this ordinance not only allows you to manage anything that's used or acquired in the future, it allows you to approve what we currently have. So the equipment that we currently have listed in our equipment items that are outlined through the ordinance as an attachment is equipment that's being utilized currently within the Police Department. You can elect not to vote for this ordinance, and by doing so, it takes away my ability to utilize any of this equipment. So I can't have an armored rescue vehicle to respond to an active shooter. I can't have a patrol rifle to respond to an active shooter or somebody that's armored with, with body armor or has superior weapons. I can't have the ability to have any less lethal shotguns. I can't utilize anything that's listed in this equipment policy without your approval. So if we don't approve the ordinance, I don't have this policy. I can't utilize this equipment, which was really intended to be de-escalation opportunities in order to create distance and utilize other options. If you start to remove those options from me, then I'm left with, with fewer results that allow me to address critical incidents and concerns in the community. So yes, the, the approval of this ordinance does provide some accountability and authority for the council and the governing body moving forward to ensure that I've got what I told you I have, and I can't get anything else that's on that list or use anything else that's on that list without first coming to you for approval. So if there was a decision to not approve this ordinance, then it takes away every piece of equipment that I do have to utilize for de-escalation purposes and safer, you know, viable at active shooter situations and other environments that we could discuss as well. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you so much. In the event that we do not pass this ordinance, actually passing this order ordinance gives oversight as to what comes in and what is used in Daly City PD. If we do not pass this ordinance, what is, I'm hearing is if you decide later to buy a forty millimeter beanbag other than from the military, you can do so. Is that correct?
No, if I understand correctly, the, the legislation, the way it's written says, I keep holding up pieces of paper like it means something, but the way the legislation that was written, every piece of equipment that was listed in the legislation that was designated as military equipment is under your control. So if I have any of that equipment and you don't pass this ordinance, we therefore we therefore can no longer use any of that equipment for the police department um for the purposes of of response to critical incidents and de-escalation and creating space and everything. So if you, if you don't pass it, I I can't utilize any of this, and I can't come to you. I I mean, I suppose I could come to you in the future and try and and implement a military use policy. Uh, but it's required at this point for me to maintain some of the equipment that I do have, um which was outlined through that attachment.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Chief Christensen. Uh, I just want to tell my colleagues, like, I understand what you're talking about. If you've ever been a victim of a crime, um, and then if he doesn't able to get what he has now, which I read the list, then if you're a victim of domestic violence and someone's holding a gun to your head, it's pretty scary. So, um, it, without going into it, it can, what we're currently, we currently have, it can actually save somebody's life. And but I understand, but if we, and we will have oversight of everything else. But um, just want to put out there, a victim of a crime. But thank you, Mayor.
Are there any um comments, questions from my colleagues? All right, um, seeing none, um, can we get um vote on the adoption of the ordinance by roll call, please? The city clerk?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my bad, motion.
I'd like to make a motion that.
Yes, my bad. Um, go ahead. We have a motion by um Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Um, the city clerk, if you can please conduct a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, and um I just wanted to say on the record that um because this gives us more oversight and being able to um see uh transparency in into this, I think it's um I will be voting for. Aye, thank you.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
I abstain. That's a motion passes? So motion passes? Um, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you.
Um. All right, we're getting down to public appearances at all communications. I'll leave this to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to know that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised when calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to continue or may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of per vanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. I see two hands raised. Last called speaker will be Maybel, and we first have a caller. You can press star six to unmute.
Hello, hello, it's Phil Look again. He, um, so couple of things real fast. Um, I was really planning something about heroes in the community and so forth, but um seeing that work, and I looked at the budget from last year fiscal year twenty twenty-two fiscal year, and I noticed that we were actually at the top, the citizens of Daly City were actually at the top in terms of the board charts, so that was pretty cool. So I think the more input from the community and the citizens would be good. Um, wanted to make mention, and I thought about it during this discussion about um the police department, there was actually uh Governor Newsom signed um police reform laws in September of last year, and I know I brought them up, there's ABs and SBs or whatever it may be. I don't know if there's actually had already been uh implemented into the police force as well as the body cams. I know that we were really pushing for the body cams to be activated by the community members. Now, again, this is to build the trust, and we don't want cameras being pointed at each other. We want to build uh build the trust, so um something to consider and to look into, but I haven't seen those on the ordinances or the meetings or anything like that. In the meantime, I do want to mention that the heroes in the community, the veterans, and don't know if I'm gonna be, or we're gonna be, make it up there, but I do want to recognize um Commander Skip as well as uh Colonel Quentin D. Jones in San Bruno. Want to make sure because we're gonna go to the city as well, and keep in mind, you know, just mentioning the heroes in the community such as military personnel who um you know, they jump on grenades for us and they take bullets for us as well as firefighters, and we missed um Battalion Chief Powers last week, and he, you know, he and his team run into burning buildings and throw us over our shoulders and carry them out to their heroes as well, as well as EMTs, EMTs, you know, save us when we fall down, have a heart attack and all that other stuff. And last but not least, with near okay, if I could just finish up with near and dear to my heart is the police department. So I helped the police department in the past and um just wanted to make mention to that about that. Anyway, have a good night. Take care. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. We have Maybel next.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I, uh, good evening, Dr. Mayor Rod, council members, administration, the public listening. My name is Maybel, and I know a lot was discussed this evening, all very important topics that needed that benefited from you all fleshing out all of those details. So I commend you all for um taking your service so seriously. As we're running into our next day here, I don't want, I know how that feels. Um, so I won't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to say how important it is to consider funding youth programs, especially aimed at advancing not only our youth but our whole, our community as a whole, specifically youth workforce programs meant to eradicate generational poverty, social inequities, and empower people. This uh would be integral to the economic vitality of Daly City. Um, a program that prepares our young people, equipping them with skills, resources, networking, wherewithal to join the workforce or develop successful businesses. And this is not just, you know, a lot of buzzwords that I'm throwing at you. This is my life, you know? This is my daughter's life. This is our youth's lives here. Um, and with all of the planned closures of the Boys and Girls Club, all up and down North County, it's going to leave many underserved in way more severe neglect. So please consider allocating funding uh for programs like this. Thank you for allowing me to speak and for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. That was last called speaker.
Thank you, Leilani. Thank you. Um. Appointments, Board Commission membership committee appointments. Are there any appointments for my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, let's move forward. Um, reports, um, are there any council committee reports? Seeing none, let's move forward to, oh, yes.
I do have a.
Okay, sorry.
I had a Basque, Basque meeting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had a Basque meeting um on the nineteenth. Um, but um I can share a summary of that given to timeframe. Um, I'll send that over to the city clerk with the summary of that meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you.
Are there any other uh council committee reports? Moving on to city council reports. Uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Actually, uh, I'll leave some of it for you because I think we were at most of the same events beginning on Friday, and then the mayor can uh can also comment. We went, attended the staff and teacher housing ribbon cutting of the Jefferson Union High School District, which was fantastic. Did a tour. It was fabulous. To think that these people were so happy. They have a roof over their head. Uh, the stories were fabulous. The the district did a great job. We were proud to even um our city council, we were a part of it. Um, other city councils attended, Colma, Pacifica and others, but I'm proud that we were there. Great job, excellent. So um beautiful housing. So I'll let him finish with that. Saturday morning, we had pancake breakfast at the Franciscan. It was great. The SERC team was there, firefighters were there, community members were there. We got to have a little update at the tables to listen to them, so it was fabulous and um our mayor was there as well. And then we also attended Shine right after that at Jefferson High School, which is the uh Pacific Islands together. They bring everybody together with from whether you're Tongan or Samoan, and they have great entertainment. That was also another great event like they always do. They hadn't had it since the um pandemic, so it was really beautiful, but I just want to say that it was busy and beautiful, celebrating always the cultures that we have in our community. It's getting late, so I'll make it real short and pass it over to the mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Giovanni. Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks um for all of us. Um. Beautiful, beautiful um ceremony with the Jefferson Union High School District. Um. Workforce development, first of its kind, beautiful housing, took a tour of it. Um. And it's beautiful to have uh folks that live and work in the area that they serve. Um, so I commend everybody. Um. All the um school board members, staff at Jefferson Unified High School District, all the way down. Um, and just to meet some of the teachers that have moved in, it's, it's like um giving them like a breath, you know, after all the work that they've done, all the work they've done through COVID nineteen online learning, um come back in in person, and also, you know, with their, you know, putting their lives on the line as well. Um. Teaching um with a thread of COVID, so um the Pancake Franciscan, I really enjoyed um having the conversations over there. So I really thank everybody, all the community leaders um over there in the in the community. Um, the Pacific Islander Together Shine event was beautiful as well. I think um weather was nice. Glad that weather was able to cooperate with the event. Also, uh, I had, we had a lot of different other events. We've had, we had um Lauren Das, who is a library board trustee, who is a ethnic studies teacher at June Jordan School of Equity in San Francisco, brought her students to the mayor's office and to City um Hall. And it was um our second field trip with um with students, and I'm very appreciative of them coming through. Some of them, it's the first time they ever went to a city hall. They have never even gone to like San Francisco City Hall, so it's really, really cool to um have them come through, and I want to thank Leilani and Charlie and the staff that was able to put that together. I was also part of a, the UCSF Asian American Pacific Islander event, and they invited me to to guest talk, to do, to share talk story, to to share a story about my experiences um as being a mayor for Daly City and then, you know, talking about um the under representation of Asian Americans in in leadership positions. I mean, we're in the Bay Area, there's a lot of us here, but if we look at it nationwide to California and state, there's still um a huge need um to have representation, and it starts off with education, you know? It starts off with seeing people that look like um us in positions of power and say that there's more than this type of position that you can go into, because generations of people have gone on to these positions. Um, but there are places of power and position that people can go into. On May nineteenth, I was invited to attend the Cypher Hip Hop Learning Community graduation at Skyline College, and I want to thank those at um Skyline College Cypher Hip Hop Learning Community, especially Dr. Nate Navado, um provided me the opportunity to have the open remarks and seeing a lot of my students that I had that was in person and then went into shelter in place to finally see them graduate after they've gone through so much. Um, it was like my first, it was, that was my class that um went to shelter in place and glad that they're able to be transferring into different colleges and universities. And then uh May twentieth, we had uh the Council of Cities. Um, I didn't attend physically, I attended virtually, but thank you to San Carlos um for hosting the Council Cities. Um, I don't know if my colleagues have any other um council, city council reports? If there isn't, let's move on to um staff reports. So I'm handing it over to, oh, my bad, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. Um, but I'll be brief, but I wanted to share that I was able to attend the Cal Cities Leadership Summit from Wednesday, May eleventh to the thirteenth in Sacramento. Um, and with that, there were different workshops um basically around modernizing um California's Behavioral Health Continuum, Planning for the Communities of Tomorrow, the Intersection of Land Use and State Climate Goals, also um how cities can um find and ensure fixed dangerous properties. Um, there was a a mix of different um workshops, I would say. Um, also, um uh so emerging issues and cutting-edge solutions for challenging uh challenges facing California cities. There was um also um intergenerational collaboration with the next generation of city leadership um on the heels of what you said, Mayor, and on um, you know, making sure that there's um, you know, pipeline and collaboration in these spaces that we are very fortunate to have of uh to be in. Um, also on um from the, that was a lo- long week in Sacramento. So that was eleven to thirteenth, and then from the thirteenth to fourteenth, um I had my, I attended my first board meeting on the Cal Cities um board, which uh was over two days, and so um just really uh being able to also share and provide input in the lens of myself as a city council member from Daly City and the Bay Area, and also from the lens of an API council member around having um our communities with a high percentage of APIs within um the the city of, well, the state of California. Um, it was the first time actually that they uh they provided a space and place for caucus members to be at the table, meaning the African-American caucus, the Latino caucus, the API caucus, and the LGBTQ caucus. And so even in these arenas, we're continuing to fight for making sure, ensuring that we have a voice at the table. And so I just wanted to um share that with all of you. Um, and then also, I was able to attend um the Jefferson Elementary School District Student of the Year event uh to honor all of the um student of the years from the respective schools, and it's always um such a inspiring event to hear um what these young uh folks are already impacting within their schools and communities, and how much more they're going to um be able to impact the world in the future. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Oh, you're muted, Pam.
It's late. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Manalo. That's a great reminder. Jefferson Elementary School District was great to be there, and they honored all the honor students from each um individual school. It it ranged from the future doctors at Stanford, a lot more interested in political science. It ranged from the future doctors at Stanford, a lot more interested in political science, scientists, marine biology. At that young age, they really, really demonstrated such amazing skills. They've been through so much, but yet they still had that drive to do the best. And it was amazing at that age. So it gives us all the more support that we need to make sure our families and our community have the mental health support and the coping skills to help deal with these children who have lost so much in such a short period of time that they say that sometimes they may not get back. So we got to give them everything they got. But thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say thank you to all my, all the, our council, my colleagues for representing our city in all these different capacities. Thank you. So moving forward to staff reports, I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Shauna Moppi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pass tonight, so thank you. You covered a lot of ground today. Nothing I could add, so thank you.
Thank you, Shauna. That's our last part of our agenda, German in memory, and I'll hand it off to Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm unmuted. Thank you. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Hilde Pepe E. Raimundo. I got about three pages here to read, but I'm going to keep it brief. After reading the whole entire obituary, something really stood out to me, so I would like to share with council. He left us at the age of 96. And he was born in Hawaii, and later on, he went back to the Philippines as a young boy. But he took something with him. What he did is during World War II, the Japanese Imperial Forces invaded the Philippine Islands. Because Pepe was fluent in Japanese, he was an asset to the American forces. He enlisted with the US Armed Forces of the Far East, which was later renamed the Philippine Army, and he served with the 14th Infantry, Third Battalion, and Company as a Filipino scout, gathering intelligence and relaying pertinent information back to US forces commanded by US two-star general Douglas MacArthur. So that's all I have and that I'm, I'll share, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory for Constancia Topenyo. This is actually Liza Arpelo's. She was one of my professors, well, actually, my first, one of my first teacher at SFSU. And this is actually from her. And she said, "If it wasn't for my grandma Conching," she was actually my great aunt, "my parents never would have gotten married, and I wouldn't have been born a year later." "She will be reunited with her late husband Eduardo in Honolulu, Hawaii this summer."
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. We have one last one, by one of our employees. We're going to honor our German memory for Lei Wangfotan, who is the father of Anoko, who is the Management Analyst Risk Management Division. And with all those that were said in German memory, let's provide a moment of silence for them. Thank you, everyone. Everybody stay safe. Good work to everyone, and we'll see you again in June. Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.